Excellent. Good evening and welcome. I'm Adam Block, Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a hybrid manner, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website. At Needham MA dot gov. The first item on our agenda is an appointment with the Needham Housing Authority with an update on the redevelopment of the Linden and Chambers Street Development. And with us tonight for the appointment is Reg Foster, Chair of the Needham Housing Authority, in addition to Attorney Robert Smart on behalf of the Needham Housing Authority, in addition to as well Architect Dan Chen from BHNA. Is there anyone else participating, Alex or Lee? Or Reg?
Not tonight unless some specific question comes up. Margaret Moran is with us in the room, who's the leader of our Cambridge Housing Authority team, in case any relevant questions come up for error, but we're not expecting that tonight.
Okay. Excellent. So what I would like to do, if I could, Reg is when I see this is you were before the board early this year. And at that board meeting, if I recall correctly, you and Attorney Smart, I think we're looking at a multitude of different options in order to be able to facilitate a much-needed redevelopment for the project. And at the time, you were considering pursuing a friendly forty B. And and now you're looking instead for a zoning bylaw change to be led by the planning board. Do you want to bring us up to speed? From from that moment to this moment and where we're at and then what you're looking to do and what you're looking for us to do to help?
Sure. So the February twenty eighth meeting that you referred to, we were thinking that a friendly forty B would be the best way to go. And one of the strong recommendations from the planning board is we should be engaging municipal zoning council, you know, ASAP and Bob Smart, Robert Smart, I think everybody knows him in this room, was engaged. And the first thing that Bob did is to do a deep dive into the town records to see how the original Linden Chambers site came into being and how the zoning for that was obtained. Also look at all the town meeting warrant articles between nineteen fifty seven and nineteen seventy one that were involved with the site. He wrote a paper on that, basically saying there were so many things that needed to be addressed. And we turned it over to questions. But it was highly advisable that we go to the town meeting route as opposed to the friendly forty B route. So we have been thinking about that, taking it through since then. The results of his notes on the subject are in the planning board packet for this meeting. And that's one of the two things that we wanted to touch base with you about tonight. The other thing is we said that we were in the middle of a conceptual design process, which is now coming to a conclusion this month. I've seen draft three, the near final ninety-five percent draft document, two or three hundred pages long. And after considering the half a dozen, or if not a dozen, or fifteen different approaches to redeveloping the site, we've settled on what we think is the sweet spot, the Goldilocks zone, not too dense, not too less, because there's a lot of need out there for equally affordable housing, addresses needs of the neighbors, neighborhood, keeps the character of the neighborhood, and so forth. So the other thing we thought we'd give you a taste of tonight, we have the leader of our architecting team here is what we have arrived at, because that obviously that and the zoning sort of are two sides of the same coin that, you know, we have to get, make sure we're kind of in the right spot before we go forward from here.
And Reg, this is conceptual design?
Yes. And in your packet were twenty-five or plus or minus documents, there's a full-size version here, and I want to share that. That you know, is attachment or exhibit or appendix A of five or six or seven appendices, which include a traffic study and you know, a wetlands plan, analysis and and looking at the utilities and has math and whatever anything else, you should be doing a conceptual feasibility study here. So we think we've got a really good approach right now. And Chair Block will just approach this in whatever direction first that you want to go or the members want to grow here.
First of all, in my excitement to begin with our appointment, I omitted at the beginning to actually to a roll call of the board and our staff. And for the record, I should do that. So because we're hybrid, we'll take a roll call vote. For those in the room, when I call your name, if you could please say that you're present. For the record, that will be helpful. Paul Albert?
Here.
Artie Crocker?
Here.
Natasha Spata?
Here.
Jean McKnight?
Here.
And our town staff, Lee Newman, our planning director?
Present.
And Alex Clea, our Assistant Town Planner.
Here.
Excellent. Good to have the gang all here. Thank you for indulging me, Reg. I I would say Bob, do you want to lead us off with a summary of of your letter? And notes that you prepared based on your June fifteenth note?
Sure, I'd be I'd be happy to do that. The housing authority really needs three zoning articles passed at town meeting, hoping that would be in May of twenty twenty-four. The first zoning article was established as only district for the Linden Chambers area, which is just over eleven acres, which would establish uses, dimension, and standard review procedure. I think there needs to be a separate zoning map article. And the third article would not be a zoning article, would be a non-zoning warrant article authorizing the select board to issue corrective deeds or other instruments needed to clear the title to satisfy potential project funders.
Why would you need a town meeting vote for that?
I think that's I that's the way that's the way it was done back in the fifties and sixties. I guess that's the that's the that's the short answer. I haven't really thought that through, and I haven't spoken with anyone. I haven't spoken with Kate Patrick or with the select board at this point about how they would see this, and I haven't spoken with title council either. So I'm not sure exactly what might be required, but as I look at as recorded votes, deeds and variances containing limits on uses elderly only and density, those appear to be incompatible with the intended uses and dimensions of this project. So I'm thinking that we may need to clean that up. If we don't have to do it, you know, we're not going to.
We're not going to. First thing, I was just questioning whether that really town meeting. Whether that's just something the select board can handle.
Yeah. If our if our chair would allow me, I I could respond to this.
It recognizes team.
My former municipal attorney had reviewed the documents, and I think they could be characterized as restrictions imposed by the town as part of the deeds of certain parcels. And I do think the select board is not able to release those restrictions without a vote at town meeting.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay.
I had understood that to be the case where a number where town meeting had voted in certain restrictions and requirements that to get out of those, it has to be done by a similar method.
Jean, that that triggered another thought. When you said the word restrictions, I'm thinking about the statute. It puts a, you know, thirty-year limit on certain restrictions. And that has probably expired, and it may be that if you talk with title council, they might they might say you really don't you really don't need it.
That certainly is possible. I was always very to to give a time limit of a hundred years. No time limit is given, that is thirty years.
Right. Bob, did you say that you're looking to do this for the May town meeting and not the October town meeting?
That's correct. Isn't that where we are?
Yes, there was a meeting, all chairs, vice chairs, meeting a month ago roughly, where, you know, everybody took a look at the timeframe between now and September thirtieth, even it's a very late fall town meeting, but a very cogent set of arguments, no matter how strongly we needed it for the funding cycle to start. It it just isn't a realistic timeframe, and we, the housing authority, accepted the wisdom and the advice, because it was quite a compelling case that was made. So we're heading for spring town meeting twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. I would just say one thing, Rob, and then I'll pass the contract back to you. Lee and also Bob, you know, we should flag the question of title. If you're going to engage, you know, your own title attorney to review and you know, that'll be happening in the background so that you know, in preparation for the May town meeting, if we need to, we probably will need, like you're saying, to go to town meeting to deal with the title issues. You know, between that council, you know, I would expect a resolution or a shared understanding or agreed position with town council, but that's just an issue. You know, I know that you're going to pursue that diligently on the side in the background. And I just want to make sure, Lee, that we flag that as well on our agenda, so we know that that's we're satisfied that that's resolved while we're working on the zoning track for May.
Okay. I thought I'd talk a little bit about what I what I see as the key zoning issues with this project. One, obviously, is the proposed density, dimensional requirements, and parking and the appearance of the project. Second would be the review procedure. And the third would be the identity of the opponent to the warrant articles. We're hoping it will be the planning board. And whether the new district should be an overlay or instead a new apartment district. So I think those are things I'm going to touch on just briefly here. In terms of density, dimensional parking, appearance of the project, I'm just going to highlight the the issues that I think are most kind of most salient. The first is units per acre. Right now, the maximum in any apartment district in town is eighteen units per acre. The housing authority would like a density of twenty-five units per acre in order to construct two hundred and fifty-two units on the site, which is an increase of
one hundred.
Of one hundred, exactly. And while observing the exclusion, which is in the current apartment district zoning for where you exclude from the from the area calculation, seventy percent of land that's in wetland areas. So that's one issue. Second is height. The housing authority has prepared a plan which includes smoke roofs on these on these buildings rather than flat roofs. And with this kind of design, greater heights are needed than would be needed for building or buildings with with flat roofs. Significantly taller buildings, actually. With soap roofs, we're talking about three stories and, again, if I'm correct, fifty-two feet?
Fifty-two feet to the to the highest point.
And four stories, sixty-two feet. Whereas with flat roofs, I think we'd be talking three three stories, thirty-six feet roughly.
That's that's about it, yes.
About right, and or four stories, four stories, forty-eight.
Forty-eight.
So I mean, that's the that's the difference. And this, you know, the 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 soap roofs were based, I wasn't part of all of this, but that was that was based on a number of meetings that were held with neighbors. We'd like to see sort of a residential appearance to these buildings. Another issue is front setbacks. We'd like to see a twenty-foot front setback, you know, which is what's called for in the underlying single residence B and general residence districts, rather than the twenty-five feet that applies in the apartment district. Because basically, we want to we want to keep the buildings as far away from the wetlands which are primarily in the rear. At least in the Linden Street units or buildings as possible. Another issue is parking. As Jean pointed out to me before the meeting, section five point one point four of the zoning bylaw says that, you know, in apartments in all over town, you're supposed to have one and a half parking spaces per unit. And the housing authorities own data in terms of parking parking usage suggests that a standard of point five is more than enough to cover not only the residents, but people who will be visiting the residents. And obviously, you know, in the course of in the course of the proceedings, you know, I would assume that the housing authority would present that information to the board and the board would want to use it in 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 town meetings, assuming the board is the.
Yeah. The select board has commissioned a parking study for the town, and we did get a first draft of that, and I think generally that the authors of the parking study, of the parking study, said that our parking regulations are way out of line.
So Paul, just to interrupt there for a minute. To be more precise, the parking study that Stan Tech conducted focused on the the two areas, one in the center and the other in the heights. And not on the parking standard for the whole of the municipality, which is why, one reason under our 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 goals, you know, I've added that, you know, we have a process to modify townwide our parking standard, but that has not, you know, we have to agree to do that. We have to get that into a place. You know, into a a planning schedule and work on that, but you know, that that parking study you're referring to was for a different geography.
My point is that I think, you know, my reading of that parking study was that even like the one and a half spaces per unit is is way too much for what what we need. The planning board is probably going to be revising that.
Right. And I guess I guess I would point out, this is this is a very different population than you overall Eden population. An awful lot of the people that are residents don't drive, they don't own cars.
So and and they can't afford them. And 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 they'll need to actually relative to other more important expenses. So
it's not, my recollection is that it's not too far a walk from there to where the bus line starts at Eden Junction.
Correct, and there are also services available to that population, transportation to medical appointments or something like that.
Is there is there is there any type of legitimate path, past path from that area to the junction? Is it go all the way down the grid?
I wish, but there the answer is no. There's no ton wave tunneling under the, you know, the berm that has the the no.
They just but I live right around the corner and already you know, that's, you know, that's accessible to High Rock Street. And then from High Rock up to Chestnut to to Junction.
So Bob, Rob, the same half unit, half 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 parking for units, half parking for bedrooms?
Pretty. They're all one-bedroom.
They're all they're all one-bedroom.
Yes.
That's okay. Some of those got it. Okay.
The answer is yes.
Yes.
And if I may, want to mention, going back to the parking study that was recently done, there was sort of a supplement to the focus on the center of town. And they did do traffic counts at several multifamily developments that were kind of transit oriented in their location. And they did find that the demand for parking in those in those and those were not limited to elderly or low income. And I I I can't remember exactly what it ended up being, but I think in my own mind, it was, we don't need one and a half. One is plenty per human, and that would even take care of guest parking. Now, I think although there wasn't a study, certainly there could be one of and what they did is they went to the developments late at night when people would be home and counted the cars and counted the spaces and and determined that there were many, many unused.
With all due respect, we don't need a study because we issued parking permits for our limited parking we already have. So we have several years of actual data on how many cars there really are with the population that's been running from us over the last few years.
And what do you find on the average?
Less than point five.
And you're actually giving more than you're giving fifty-seven percent if I'm, it looks like you have a hundred and forty-four parking spaces, you have two hundred and fifty-two units.
But if you, you know, are you.
So that's more than fifty percent.
In the new development.
The new development.
We're allowing for some additional services during the day.
In addition, half of guests.
And yes.
So that so so your parking standard, to be clear, reflects not just the actual demand from tenants extrapolated out from the current hundred and fifty units or hundred and fifty-two units to two hundred and fifty units, but also to include for guests, staff and maintenance you know, of the of the site.
Yeah.
Bob, did you want to continue?
Yes. I was just going to say that there's a precedent of establishing a lower standard. We get it when you all the services recognize the unique characteristic for that development establishes standards from. There was this precedent.
Before we move on, I'd like to probably, you talked about setbacks, setbacks. And I know there've been some neighbors commenting on the setbacks, and when I look, at least I'll look at some of the pictures here. I mean, with a building of this height, a twenty-foot setback, that's that looks fairly tight to the street. I know you're talking about trying to keep it away from the wetland, and that's obviously always a good thing, but and we're also talking about, you know, you're talking about trying to make it kind of look like part of it within integrated neighborhood. Twenty feet, that's really like, to me, that seems really close to the street. Now, is are these front parts of the building, are those elevators?
Stairs.
Those are just stairs.
Before we go into the detail on the plan, Artie, would you mind if we just let Rob, Attorney Smart, continue and complete his presentation, and then we can go through all of the dimensionals and all the other elements?
Well, we have been stopping and talking about other things since he's been going along.
I know, but I prefer I'd my preference is to for Bob to complete his presentation without interruption. And then we can go back to all of these additional questions, not just you, Artie, but for all members.
The second point I'd like to I'd like to address is the review procedure. We're recommending that the proposed use, which is affordable housing for low-income elderly and low-income handicapped be of right. And that the site issues, the normal site issues, traffic, site safety, drainage, and so forth be handled through the site plan review process, which I think is adequate to address, you know, all of the all of the concerns which the board and the town might have. If, you know, the board feels that there need to be additional criteria and submissions to what what the section seventy-four, the section of the bylaw calls for, that could certainly be incorporated in the zone. Third is, in terms of warrant warrant article component, we're hoping this will be the planning board as opposed to the Needham Housing Authority for the zone for the zoning articles. And the creation of a new zoning district is normally led by the board. And provision of deeply affordable housing is a key role, a key role of the board. So I think I think the board would be in charge of this and and and, you know, presenting it on the town meeting floor would be appropriate. And, you know, obviously, we're available to provide help with you know, drafting and whatever else under coordination I need. The fourth is, what what type of district would be appropriate? I I think I think that, you know, I looked at a number of different models, and it seemed to me that an overlay district makes more sense than a new apartment district. And with my memo, I did provide a draft of a warrant article which called for an overlay. And the model that made the most sense to me, the most analogous, was actually the what what the town did for the hospital back in nineteen eighty-nine or whenever it was, nineteen ninety, so I guess nineteen ninety-eight, it created a medical overlay district for the hospital, you know, which had been you know, a town, a town-run operation of a hospital for many years and gradually and eventually you know, was was turned over to Beth Israel Deaconess. But 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 they did, but this was done by medical, by an overlay district, where you're going to have all of the all of the requirements, you're going to have, you're going to have the use provisions, you're going to have the dimensional provisions, you're going to have review provisions, all in one article.
So Paul, what's really the difference between doing an overlay district and creating a new apartment?
Paul, in fair in fairness to, you know, to Artie, I'd like Bob to be able to complete his presentation. And then we can go through with, you know, with our questions. Is that okay?
Keep that keep that question.
I'm just.
Back in your mind.
Right, I guess I I guess the other point is that, you know, the hospital area, just like the the hospital, it actually is located in two zoning districts. But like this Linden Chambers is, it's two, it's two, it's two districts that are that are encompassed here. So I think the overlay is just most appropriate way. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to to go back first to Artie and then to to Paul. Artie, you had some dimensional questions, starting with the front setback.
Yeah, so I know, even before I saw a lever that from some neighbors, I my one of my first reaction was, that's incredibly close to the street. I mean, obviously, we want to do as much as we can. I mean, but you've already made the comment of trying to blend it into the neighborhood of a neighborhood look. You know, it's it's my mind is too close to the street, then you then you throw this architectural bump out there, the stairway make it worse. Visually makes it worse. So I don't know what options there are for that. Visually, that stairway there is is not is not pleasant from a neighborhood standpoint. And the distance from the street, considering the height, the height that you're looking for us to give to change it to, that just proportional wise makes it even look closer to the street.
I guess one 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 partial response to that is that what's across the street is not houses that you have across from the muzzy, the muzzy site. What's across the street is 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 a big, a big field and a school way behind that. So it's a different it's a different thing. We're sure, you know, the 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 closest neighbors, neighbors, other than the ones that's right immediately on either side are 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 actually on Naval Street.
Well, I'm not really, I'm almost not even thinking of how close to the other houses. I'm thinking just visually, probably driving down the road, what does it look like? It has a lot of massing to it right near the sidewalk. And again, those those front units, that front stairway, stairways coming out. It it gives it a, it it takes away from a residential style with is it gives an institutional style that front stairway.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, a couple other points. Your points are extremely well taken and were not overlooked. And in trying to put the jigsaw puzzle together, besides staying outside of the fifty-foot line, which is on the rear of that building, which you will see, we're just barely.
Well, it depends if that fifty is that fifty-foot line is already disturbed.
No, it's already disturbed, but as you know, we we when
No, it's already disturbed, but as a, you know, we, we, when we met with the conservation commission, we said we do our best. And, and, um, and may I just finish the point here, cause I know you're an expert on this. Um, bringing that expertise over from there, um, I just wanted to throw out, I, I'm not trying to. Your point is very well taken. The other thing that we optimized before is frontage on Linden Street. And under the existing conditions, um, there's nearly the entire, uh, street in that area. One end to the other has one story buildings, not three story buildings. And we were also trying to optimize by creating open space and I'm really speaking for. You know, we're segueing into what Dan has been trying to, uh, do here. Um, with these courtyards that open on there, so there's a trade off, obviously, and. Um, but your point is very well taken and this is why we're here tonight.
Well, I mean, I love the term, I visually the courtyards don't come like that, that was, that was nice that you, you were introducing that. I'm just saying it's, it's in my mind, it's too close to the street and those institutional style exterior stairways. This is unfortunate.
Notice. Absolutely.
Is there a reason why, uh, the stairs were, uh, placed in the front of each building on one of the sides of each of the buildings? Instead of incorporating it in elsewhere in the structure?
I'm going to direct that to, uh, Dan Chen, do you want me to put any of these diagrams we're talking about up on the screen with, as we talk? Um, Chair Block or?
Sounds like the people, the people participating should be able to see them, so I would agree with you, you're not right.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Right, let me see if I can get the screen sharing going here.
Uh, uh, this is Dan Chen, the, the short answer, uh, is, is yes. And in fact, when I go through the floor plans, you'll see that both scenarios, uh, was the stair at the end of the building. Versus was the stair in the middle with all the wing, uh, are, are, are present. So it, it really is an architectural decision or, or an architectural preference. To break up that facade, certainly being, being that we're at concept design. I, I think that, that sort of shortcoming would commons easily sort of accommodated. Um, and, and also to, to clarify, the property line of the project is set back six feet. From the, uh, from the street, so in effect, from the street curve to the base of the building is, is twenty six feet. Then in, and then additionally, and again, I'll, I'll, when we have the plan pulled up. You'll, you'll see that one wing of the building is, is slightly shorter than the other to accommodate for depth of the stair. So, uh, all, all of this, which is a divide or devices that we use to, to minimize. The impact, the size, uh, of, of the building to the street.
One of the things that I was looking for in particular, Gene will come to you in a second, was, uh, what I don't see here. Is, um, a zoning chart. Uh, that includes the dimensional regulations that you're looking for. And then in addition to that, I think I had asked for, uh, at our chairs meeting, um. Was to compare that with the existing conditions, a chart for the existing conditions. Lee, do you have a record of what the, or Reg, do you know offhand? What the current setbacks are in the front of the properties that are now on Linden Street?
It is twenty feet.
It's twenty, the current setback is twenty feet.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Those are like one or two story building.
One, one story building.
Uh, Artie, did you have any other comments or questions before I go to Eugene about the natural regulations?
That, that was really it, um, and I think this, I, I believe this probably a way to accommodate something different. To push it and stay and, and keep the conservation commission happy with what we're trying to accomplish here and not, and not, not. Interfere with their wildlife habitat and. Going into previous disturbance, that's all.
Would you, uh, like, uh, Dan to present other elements of the planet or do you want to continue with Q and A like this?
In, in, in a moment, I would like, I know that Jean, uh, had her hand up and I wanted to recognize her before we. Proceed with, uh, a review of the architecturals.
Um, yes, sticking to, I have a, a couple of issues, but I just want to stick to this issue step setback right now. Um, I note that, um, the setbacks for general residents are twenty feet. And although, uh, the strip right along Linden Street is strangely in general residence. A, the acre zoned area with a twenty five foot setback. I think the eventual plan for that section is to, um, that, uh, and please, and, uh, Reg. Um, let me know if I'm, I, I'm wrong about this, but you may, may, may remember fifteen or so years ago. Uh, some of the small cottages were converted to duplexes. And some of the area was rezoned to general residence to accommodate that. And I expect that will be the plan going forward for that area. Um, and so I think when you talk about going down the street and having a certain pattern setbacks. Um, it does seem that, uh, twenty feet would work. And so therefore I think the focus would be on the particular look of the building from the street. And I agree with you, um, Artie, that this staircase thing just doesn't look very good from the street. But I'm sure there are ways of redesigning that would make it give it. And if the courtyard look is lovely, um, but just something a little more residential in the very front of the building, I think. So, um, at first I was also thinking, oh, it really should be twenty five feet, twenty feet isn't enough. But when I think of the neighborhood and I think of its future development and in fact, of course, that it's immediately across the street from the school and play area. Um, I, I think, I think twenty feet would work.
Well, I think we have to be realistic in that and in comparing apples and apples, which this isn't. I mean, a, a single story unit, a regular house, twenty feet, twenty five feet is one thing, this is not that. This is a much taller unit, much, much more massing here in general. And so that's what it has to be based on, the visual massing of something, so like, like, that has to be taken into account. We don't want it to look like industrial Z or square two. Where we have in a apartment building that yes, fits the setback accommodations, but it's six stories high, we're not talking six stories above, of course. But we're talking, but that's a relative concept we're talking about to avoid, we want to avoid that type of thing. So, I'm thinking that this should be the norm, any type of normal residential setback, just, it's not the same thing, and that's not apples and apples. This is not a residential type. And so, so that it have it hidden, it should have a very setback.
Mr. Chair, may I put my two cents with it?
Yes. The chair recognizes Paul.
First of all, I, I asked a question about, um. Uh, the overlay versus not overlay and I, I, I think Bob has answered that question, so. So for the time being, I'll say on that, um, I, I, I don't think it matters, since, you know. But, you know, we'll get away with it, of course. Um, I agree with Artie. Uh, you know, we're looking at. Three stories or with the picture that I saw recently, it looks like it may even be three and a half stories. That are going to be right on Linden Street. And I think having, having three to three and a half stories, uh, you know, fifty two feet, um, or possibly more. Being only twenty feet back from the street is massive. It doesn't matter to me that it's across the street. From a playing field, which someday may develop, for all I know. Um, it, it, it's, I would like to see it setback, I'm looking at the wetlands, um. Uh, chart and, and I think there's room. My recollection for when I was on the conservation committee, it was seven, eight years ago now. Um, is that the major concern is the twenty five foot no despair zone. Once we get past this twenty five feet, once we're in the fifty foot, as, as Artie pointed out. Uh, especially where it's been, uh, all, all, already somewhat developed, um. Having the buildings be between twenty five and fifty feet from the wetlands. Um, should not be as much of a problem for the conservation commission. I think, I think we can set this back somewhat and still, and still stay outside of the twenty five foot zone and, uh. Uh, have it. Have it look better as you're driving down Linden Street, not having a three and a half story building staring in, in, in the face as you drive down. Linden Street, uh, which I do periodically, you know, from, from, from high rock in the center of town. Um, that's basically my comment, I mean, it's, I like the idea that the courtyard is there. And that, you know, that, that breaks it up nicely. Uh, but still, it's, it's, uh, I'd like to see it said, said that. Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, just to address your. Um, and, um, the other thing we were trying to be sensitive to, uh, is the input from the neighbors on Maple Street. Um, so, um, it's not just a simply a question of moving it closer. Uh, uh, to the bottom of the diagram that I have, uh, up on the screen, which is to the east. Um, towards Maple Street, um, so again, we were trying, I'm not saying. Uh, that, in fact, I, I think your point is very well taken. Uh, we are planning to meet with the conservation commission shortly. Uh, we felt that it was appropriate to go to the planning board first, um, and then to the.
Just to interrupt and I, I apologize, but I, I remember that you had mentioned, I think at our chairs meeting. That you actually had had a meeting scheduled on the books with the conservation commission. And we were interested in, uh, at this meeting. With the outcome of what had occurred at that meeting with Concom. So are you saying that that meeting has not yet occurred?
Yes, we were asked to postpone it because of the, uh, they are crushed under with their schedule. Uh, and, and, uh, we were going to be on Thursday's meeting and we've received today another request to postpone. Meeting with them.
Okay, so.
When, so this is. What was last, the living age? Um, a month, uh, a few months, you know, two months ago. Okay, so. So the map that we have in front of us that has the. Is the, the actual, yes, there's a wetlands report included in the design, yeah. So I'm, I apologize, Mr. Chair, I should have probably let you know about that in advance. Um, and, um, and, you know, we will get on their calendar as soon as they will let us on their calendar here. I think if, um, given the input tonight, um, I think I might ask. Uh, Debbie and Janet, uh, Bernardo, i- if there's some chance that we could still check in on Thursday's meeting. But, um, apparently they have three simultaneous applications and orders and conditions going that have been. A challenge to get through and asked if we would mind postponing.
So I'll, I'll speak to the, Gene, I see your hand up and I'll come to you in a minute. I'll speak shortly to the process, uh, you know, going forward. Um, uh, but I will for the moment, uh, recognize Jean.
Oh, I, I have one more item that I'd like to raise, if I may, if Jean will let me.
Of course.
Yes, Paul, go ahead.
And this is a legal question that I don't expect you to have an answer to, it's just a question. Um, you know, for, for future research and discussion with town council. Um, as I've expressed many times, and I think for other clients and viewers, I. Much prefer special permits to as of right use. Um. Can we have a situation if we're going to go as of right? And can we have a zoning article that limits the ownership and the operation? Of the project to, um, um. Government agencies, quasi-government agencies, possibly charitable organizations. Um. If it's, if it's going to be as of right, I don't want to see a private developer in here. Uh, you know, a private developer makes me want to put in a special permit. Um, and I've had experience a long time ago, dealing with the people who run the Stephen Palmer Center. Which is definitely a for-profit organization, so, so if we can legally limit this. To government agencies, quasi-government agencies, um, throw in nonprofits if we have to. Um, I'd be inclined to go as a right. Um. Trust you guys to run it properly, but I don't see a turnaround. And then we wind up having, having a private developer going in there and looking at the bottom line and then. You know, it, it's, uh.
I, I would have to research that, I, I know, I know, like, I, I know that, that, yeah, I, I, I know that, I know that special permits. Are often granted, um, during their particular, uh, to, to an applicant. Uh, and this procedure that you have to go through if you want to change the ownership. I'm not sure about site training view, and again, I'd have to, I'd have to work with that, maybe.
Well, uh, yes, um, I, I think what you suggest, Paul, uh, as far as I know about. The financing and the structure of a development like this, and Margaret Moran could probably speak to it better than any, any of us. Um, although I went to an M C L E this past week, uh, about affordable, it was called Affordable Housing Primer. And it was all about how developments like this are financed now, and it's all about federal tax. And the ownership has to be private. In order for the federal tactic, Margaret is not, in order for the federal tax credits to be used. And that's the only big pot of money available.
Well, because a tax credit doesn't do any good. When on, when on tax paying entity.
Exactly.
And that doesn't mean that the, that, that the non-tax paying entity can't get financed. It's just that they don't have the incentive. You know, if they have to pay a certain. Percentage, and I'll tell you, um, we recently, uh, were looking for a large loan. For a client of ours and, um, we're, we're, we're looking at nine and a half percentage rates. For. The short term, the short term line, that's amazing, it's getting expensive because of what the Fed had to do. In terms of raising interest rates.
Okay.
Reg, wasn't there a talk at one point of having some partnership? Were they private entities, but you actually maintain control and total control? I remember at one point. Yes, I, I.
So, we, we are going to have to get a developer partner and, and, um.
Well, I mean, it was a, I mean, I could teach actually, part of the, part of the project.
But also to operate the property.
But you, but you maintain control.
We don't mean controlling control in the way I think that you mean it, I mean, that's a very broad question and. Uh, a topic we could spend an hour going into and Margaret can do it off the top of her head if you want right now. But I think, I, I understand the intent of your question. And, um, we will need to negotiate not only a developer, uh, you know, agreement, but also. An agreement that covers the operations for at least the tax credit period. We will retain ownership on the underlying land and everything will revert back to the housing authority. But, um, the only way you can get, uh, the kind of tens of millions of dollars that we need to do this development. Is if the entities that are putting, um, uh, putting their money at risk via the tax credit. Uh, program have, uh, absolute iron clad guarantees that nothing is going to get screwed up. And that means that they need somebody who's done it before, not, and, you know, a three million dollar a year, need him housing authority agency. I think that's a valid point and so, um, that's probably the way you're probably going to have to go. Or it doesn't happen, one of the two, yes. That only goes to my question of as a right, there's a special.
So that's, that's an outstanding issue, it sounds like, uh, Jean, did you have another question about the, any of the dimensional regulations? Or anything else before I move on?
A comment on the process of this meeting, um, I know we've all, we on the board have had the opportunity to review the plans. That were sent to us, um, but the general public, uh, might be tuning in, has it? And, uh, is, is Mr. Chen going to be making a presentation? If he is, is this the time for it, although I realize Natasha has a comment. Um, is this the time for it before we go on and talk about height and different things?
So I can speak to the process and then, yes, I, Natasha, I had a number of questions to you because we haven't been really talking about. Uh, you haven't had an opportunity yet to participate in the discussion of the other issues, but in, certainly in particular to the. of the other issues, but in certainly in particular to the dimensional regulations, but uh, I'll come to you uh, if uh, in a minute. You're, you're right, Jean, although these plans have been in our, our packet. Uh, you know, tonight was just an appointment. I guess what I will say is I know, Reg, you've, you've spoken, you've referenced a couple of comments uh, that this was effectively built in uh, in part in response to some of the comments that you've received along the way in your own process and your own community engagement. Uh, I know those meetings I know have been productive, yet we're now at a point where if the Planning Board's gonna take this over and we'll decide that soon, and I suspect that we probably will. We're gonna have to embark on a pretty comprehensive public uh, engagement broader than what you, uh, the Housing Authority had conducted. I think if I recall correctly, uh, you know, the, the notice that you had provided, I don't think that it, that it identified um, uh, the substantive changes that you were proposing that we see here tonight, so and they typically are more extensive in the legal notice that the Planning Board provides. I suspect we, I have it uh, on our uh, planning um uh, schedule that we'll review tonight, a little later tonight. But if we're looking for a May town meeting, I think that, you know, we need to have, we'll review when we need to have the, you know, the language uh, uh, complete for um, you know, for the warrant and hearings, I think would minimally have to be done in uh, uh, in January. But I think, given the scope of this project and the substantive change from the current condition to the new uh, to the proposed condition, I think that this really requires more than just a one hearing. I think that we should have probably uh, at least two uh, at least two hearings or if not hearings, a community engagement that's noticed uh, in a substantial way that we typically do for hearings, but in addition to that, you know, with um, uh, you know, with even broader outreach to the uh, to the community through other means, which we can discuss later, but the point is, we will need to provide, we will need, uh, and we will create another, several additional opportunities beyond tonight, because tonight is just an appointment. It's not an opportunity for the public to participate in the dimensional regulations and the policy and some of these other comments that have come up tonight. Uh, so we will have that. There will be uh, there will be a public hearing or it may be classified as a uh, you know, a, a public meeting, but it will be an opportunity for um, you know, for us to present, and it may be more specifically Dan at that time, presenting the whole dimensional regulation, the scheme, the design scheme and so forth. Um, and then uh, for us to hear from the community, uh, you know, more uh, more broadly and more robustly, any of the feedback about any of the dimensional regulations, including height, including um, including the setbacks, uh, which may be informed in part based on uh, subsequent conversation with the Conservation Commission and on any of the other dimensional regulations as well, including the uh, you know, the function of whether it's by right or by uh, by special permit. So this is just the beginning of the process. And it will be a robust process. And we will have a multiple opportunities for the public in a meaningful way to participate, uh, you know, in uh, in providing feedback, uh, comments and asking questions about uh, any of these elements.
Mister Chair.
Yeah.
I just wanted to follow up on the chair meeting that we held and what we tried, I think what we discussed in terms of what the process on this might look like going forward. And I thought we um, had agreed that the Housing Authority itself, because they were closer to their own planning scheme, would develop this to a stage where they understood the exact zoning parameters that they required. Um, and that they weren't high use, they're all legal, so that should prepare the warrant article for us. We would hold the hearing and then if we were comfortable with it, we would take on the actual authorship of it and the presentation at town meeting, but not that the foundational work would be done by us.
Well.
Did I just understand?
I had understood it, I I maybe I, I've had a little more opportunity to reflect on you know, what were, uh, what was initially proposed, what we're dealing with. I, I think Bob, you've done an excellent job of preparing the base zoning. Barely the dimensional regulations are incomplete in that because it's, you know, part of the elements that we need to review, but I think I think they're pretty close to that, Lee, and then I I think that as we ordinarily do any zoning change, we're dealing with dimensional regulations, that there ought to be uh, you know, robust public participation uh, and engagement. And we need opportunities to do that, and so we'll have to figure out the right mechanism, but I, I'm, I think as it, as it stands now, I think that the Planning Board should take lead on um, on arranging and and uh, you know, uh, a community engagement, uh, community uh, participation as we move forward, but we can discuss that as, at a, as a board, you know, later tonight. And perhaps, uh, you know, Lee and I, you and I can chat about it after as well. I'm not a hundred percent resolved, but I we, to be completely honest, we need a, we need a more robust uh, notice process and we need a more robust um, community engagement before we resolve uh, the zoning for the dimensional regulations, the question of by right or by special permit. And I think that might be best for the Planning Board to lead that process.
I would, I would agree with you, Mister Chair. That um, that there, there has to be enough time for us to go through what we would consider our process to be comfortable with what we're talking about here. And giving the public enough, enough notice to participate in this. And what, what point, where, where's the go no, go no-go point of that, I'm not certain, but I mean, for me personally, I'm not sure. For me personally, these plans aren't ready for us to take over.
So can I add comments now, Mister Chair?
Yeah, please.
So, and Justin, I, I don't wanna repeat what everyone else has said because I think I, I agree with a lot of the comments and I appreciate the opportunity for the housing and understand that it's conceptual and everything, but um, I do agree that um I, I guess I, I disagree that there aren't houses around there, because there is a context, right? So you're coming down Industry, you're coming down. Um, all of the streets around are full of houses and they, there is a fabric throughout and there are setbacks and, and there's a landscape feel as you're going down and then um, you kind of have this right now, it, you know, it's conceptual, but it's, it's kind of an abrupt scale change and and um, and landscape change. So to what's there, because even in the field, there are trees and everything. So I guess for me, it's um having more, showing more of the context in some of these, it, it looks like you're just isolating it more towards the high rock school and, you know, and so that we can understand how, how it impacts the context and that will mean more articulation to the buildings, including removal of the stairs from the front, but then there's also the landscape and peace and what does that look like, you know? So kind of understanding how it is contextually throughout the neighborhood, I think is important in addition to what others have said, but I think, um, again, appreciate the housing opportunities and everything, but um, I think it, it needs a little more conceptualizing and a, and a finer brain.
May I address your point and the other points that brought up? It, it was never our intention uh, to have this, the other, anything other than an informal check-in, uh, to announce that we have finished the conceptual design, which is a lot of hard work to get there, even though it looks very simple. Uh, it has not been simple. And, and what we have envisioned, although I think there's many different ways of doing it, uh, but what we've always envisioned is that we would do this round of checking in now. Uh, clearly, we need to check back with the Conservation Commission and see if we can move a bit closer to the twenty-five foot line, for example. Um, and then uh, we are ramping up schematic design, which will have a lot more context uh, in every single dimension. There are many, many other dimensions that are not as um, maybe is, as much sizzle, like how are we gonna do the HVAC and climate, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and it was our, uh, if we stay on track and Dan help me out here, but we should have that schematic design done by September. Um, and, you know, and uh, one of the big pieces of input that we already all know is we don't wanna do these public hearings in the middle of the summer when everybody's on vacation anyway. And so we wanted to do this check-in just to, you know, take the temperature informally and see if we're largely on the right track, get the kind of comments we've gotten tonight. And then um, release the schematic design, it with all of its detail. Um, and, and if you folks wanna make sure there's certain things that are in there that we addressed, let us know now. And then we have that public hearing or public input process that isn't just our, we, us doing it, but um, you know, helped by the gravitas of the Planning Board really looking in very thoroughly to. Well, flattery, you know, but no, I, I think this is one of the hardest wo- working committees in town, obviously, and um, and I really appreciate the work it does. And, and that's when, um, what we hope to do with the informal input you've given Bob tonight and the informal input that Dan has gotten, several pages of notes scribbled over here on my right. Um, and hopefully there'll be also staff contact. We also have to have contact with the plant, uh, select board. Uh, we, we didn't wanna start, we wanna start here, because this is a planning thing for town, but there are a number of select board dimensions to this as well, like Tom, um, like Bob mentioned at the beginning. And um, I, I would look forward to yeah, having to charge out this meeting to work closely with uh, Vee and Alex and the staff, um, and you know, um, the town manager staff to progress, do the staff work necessary so that we can have a good open process uh, in the fall.
And, and I just wanna add that, no, thank you, that's really great. I, I mean, I appreciate the fact you're trying to break the street wall by creating these courtyards. I think that's where the opportunity lies, in the space between all these buildings, to either push them back or, or, you know, c- create opportunities for how it engages the street. Um, rather than creating a street wall, but, but it can, you know, there are different ways of doing it, and I think, I think you're, you know, conceptually thinking about that and that's appreciated. Um, but kind of moving it to the next level, I think more articulation is needed and more thought about the street edge and, and, and the residences.
Yeah, uh, Natasha, did you have uh, any other comments about any of the other dimensional regulations or you, uh, by right or by special permit or the type of district, whether it's an overlay or an underlying, just a new underlying district?
Not at this time, I think. I mean, we have to, I think we have to review it as a group and um, there are, you know, pros and cons to all of it, so I understand where you're coming from. I just think, I, I don't have anything, I miss, it was very clear, your presentation, so I just think we just think of review it.
If I may add one more comment, um, the reason that we're asking for zoning by right, subject to a site plan review, I think, just to say clearly here in this public meeting, this was discussed before. And, and Margaret Moran is behind me and can add more detail, but the nature of the funding process, when we actually do apply for funds, requires us to have that zoning in place by right. If it's not in place by right, then we can't even submit a preliminary application and have it accepted.
And I believe that's the for MBTA communities, they, they, they also wanna only see site plan review, not special permit.
And, and if I could tie that together, um.
Correct.
If I could tie that into your comments um, a few minutes ago, Bob being cautious and an attorney, and I'm not an attorney and I'm sort of not as constrained here. Yeah, yes, uh, exactly. Um, but I was, I've read all those old town meeting articles. And one of the reasons we need the third warrant articles and just things is they, uh, clearly your predecessors on the Planning Board and the where was the leadership at town were thinking the same thing in between nineteen fifty-seven, nineteen seventy-one. So if you looked at those articles, they are very specific as to who's using it and what is being used for and the maximum amount of dimensions, that's in the town meeting articles. The actual zoning was allowed by special permit. Uh, three, four of them, I think there were four special permits, but. Or variances, yeah, right, so, or variances. Sorry, misspoke, but, but, um, so you having that specificity in there and crafting the words so that there isn't a chance of this getting out of control and some private developer coming in and doing something that isn't the intent of the town. I, I, I'm, I'm very I'm confident it can be done and it probably will be done for those reasons uh, next Springtown meeting here, in my opinion. As Bob's legal para- paralegal, I am very confident that that will be where we go here.
Jean?
Um, I deferred on a couple of comments because I wasn't certain whether there was going to be a presentation, but if there's not going to be, then I'll, I'll go into two more, two more comments, if that's okay.
Sure.
All right, um, uh, with regard to height, um, um, what we're talking about in the front, and I'm referring to um, Smart's memo, is um, on, by front, I mean, a long Linden Street is um, um, height maximum of fifty-two feet. But I take it that's the, to the top of the um, third store, the, the roof, above the third story is a half-story essentially, which is the peaked, simply the peaked roof. And this is, it reminds me of, uh, for example, the uh, mixed use development on Dedham Avenue with the zoning allowed. Um, and it allows it in this whole, in that whole area, though that's been our one project, that it could go to four stories, but the fourth story had to be set back, or it had to be a half-story peak kind of thing. And that is what we're talking about here. So it can be drafted that way so that it doesn't allow um, a fifty-foot, uh, um, excuse me, a fifty-two-foot tall box of a building, right? Yeah, so uh, that's one art, one i- issue. And the other at the rear of the site, um, it's proposed that there be um, a kind of an angled building, one big angle goes like a Z sort of, um, uh.
It's up here in the top left here.
Yeah, oh, yes, that's it, yes. And that building would be um, would be higher. That, that building would be sixty-two feet. And I just wanna make sure when we're drafting this, that we make it very clear that that height limit, that higher height limit can only be used, and I think these, these plans don't have numbers on them for distances, but they do have scales. I think that's a hundred and fifty feet back from Linden Street. So I think I would want to have, I think what's shown here on these plans is a hundred and fifty feet back from Linden Street. So I think if we, if we say you can only have that height, if you're that far back, um, that would mean that only that area would, would qualify, because of course they can't go back a hundred and fifty feet from, on the Linden Street, um, because that would be in the wetlands, you know, it's the only place you really could do that, so want to make that point. And then I wanna speak about process. Um, because, as you know, because I, um, I said this at the prior um, meeting that we had with our great foster and others. Um, I want to see this site as an opportunity to the town to add these acres to our, uh, these eleven acres to our MBTA community, to our zoning that complies with the MBK Communities Act. And um, I can see a scenario how this can be done. Um, the, the important thing is to get this zoning in place for this development. Uh, and the reason we're going to allow this increased height and increased number of units per acre, um, et cetera, is because this is for the handicapped and senior low-income uh, population. But of course, as uh, we know, that you can't have those kinds of rules and be in compliance with MBTA communities. However, I see a way to do this. Uh, now, um, the Housing Authority wants to have their zoning in place and at the uh, two thousand twenty-four annual town meeting. Whereas for the MBTA communities, we're to, we're. Whereas for the MBTA communities, we're, we're now, um, talking about a process that extends the time all the way to the fall two thousand twenty four, um, town meeting. So we get this zoning secured, we get this zoning passed at the annual town meeting. Then we move forward with the MBTA communities that, which as we've all discussed, is based on what we already have in our zoning, that is the apartment A one district. So then we go to the site and we change the underlying zone. It doesn't, it doesn't need to be, um, um, single residence, A acre lots and general residence. It can be underlying zoning, uh, can be apartment A one by right. But in fact, the development, of course, will go forward with this zoning uh, because it's what the, because the housing authority controls the development process. So that's what I envision. I'd hate to let this eleven acres go. It is transit oriented, uh, from the point of view being a half a mile from the, um, junction train station.
As a
Nobody is making the housing authority develop this parcel at all. The underlying zoning of, for apartment A one is by right zoning, as is the overlay. Uh, but the overlay, uh, you can only do this height and this density and these other special things if it's geared for, um, low income elderly and handicapped. The underlying zoning would have no age limits, um, no bedroom size limits. So I really think it will work and we'll get that.
I think that's an ingenious solution, counselor.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
So if I were the Attorney General, I'd be too cute by half.
Well, you know, if you meet the, you meet the rules exactly, I don't know how they Is there, um, wetlands are excluded land, but that's true everywhere. That's true at Rosemont. We'll, we'll be saying, well, we're counting Rosemary Ridge where you have to take out the wetland. According to the DHCG, and you have to do that here too, but I think you still you still have a large, large acreage. I think it's only five percent of the property is wetland, I believe.
It's a bit more, it depends where you, how you measure it. I don't know what, what, how it's exactly measured for the purposes of the MBTA.
So it's a little bit
I would guess a little bit
That eleven acres.
That we should, that we should be considering, but you know, I, I, I would have a backup to see whether we meet the requirements of the MBTA zoning without needing to do that.
Well, that's, that process will show us when we, I don't know what we do, but it's something I don't want to give up on it. I, I think there is a strategy that we can do it, but we don't want to interfere with this important development.
He's been over backyard so that people can actually walk to the junction.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna Lee ask you to flag that issue to see if there's a way to include this as part of our compliance, but yet it will have its own separate process. Did you have a question?
Yeah, it was about the height and the need, if we're going to go to sixty feet, making sure we have, uh, have it explicit that it's hundred fifty feet back. And, um, the the concerns that were already expressed about whether we would be comfortable with the twenty five foot setback, um, kind of on the fence on that, you know.
So can I add one more thing? Just because you talked about the height, I think one thing that would be helpful and might help you as as well to for us to understand is a section cut through high, the high rock school down the hill to understand how it relates in height to the location of the school. And, um, I think that would be really helpful when you talk about height, because there is not, there isn't a house across the street, but there is a school and it's up on a hill. And so understanding the relationship, I think, would be pretty critical. And it might be helpful, you know, in the end to to make it feel that maybe because the school is at a higher level, it might not feel as high. It still needs to be articulated and we have to look at the setbacks, but it might give a different type of context than what you already have.
And just, just before, just before, just to be clear, uh, sorry, Reg, um, there are single family homes and other and other homes on, uh, Sylvan Street.
Yes.
Um, and they're also, you know, on, on Linden Street, uh, you know, by, uh, Blake and so forth, so.
Right. And I had mentioned that, and I had mentioned that before, just the context for the houses, but then I thought also the school and understanding that how it relates to the school and the height of the school.
So may build on that point, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And then I've got a couple of comments that I'd like to make and then we'll move. Go ahead.
Briefly, I I've put up this, uh, sort of artist rendering elevation here. We're, we're hovering over Roach Brothers roughly here. And, um, uh, I want to just say on behalf of the authority, this is a beautiful neighborhood with mature trees. It's just gorgeous in there. And and we we know that not only because we know that anyway, and Dan knows this anyway, but you know, we have twenty five acres up here where where the old veterans' housing is, we have twenty five acres in there. And so it's really incumbent upon us to preserve the character of the neighborhood to the maximum extent possible. Now, of course, there's a thousand person waiting list as well. So we're, you know, we got that pulling in another direction, but we get it and and we're trying to do that. And and towards that end, I just wanted to, um, go to this other, uh, not this one, but this one here. Uh, and and, um, say on behalf of Dan that we, this building here that's on the left used to be where the parking lot was. We, we spent the first five months of the conceptual design thinking that was the right answer until we had our second neighbors meeting in ma- mid May. And you see this little house right, right there on, you know, one thirty five Linden Street and there, it, you know, if you want to talk about looming over a residential, uh, structure, then that was we, we were defining that. And, um, the team, uh, that was one of the most profound inputs that we got out of our two neighbor meetings that we have, which is that there was another way of doing this that is a lot more acceptable. And then if we can, uh, take advantage of comments we've gotten tonight uh, and I, uh, and see what we can do to really, you know, continue to improve um, the, how, how this is congruent with and compatible with the nature of the neighborhood, we are committed to doing that.
That's great. I think what you're, to summarize a little bit what you're hearing, and we can probably, uh, close the uh, the deck if we can, um, for the screen share. I, you know, the, the board itself is unresolved as to the question of by right by special permit. We still have some other outstanding, uh, fundamental questions that we'll continue to, uh, review. And we're also unresolved on the dimensional regulations. Except to say that at least three members, perhaps four or five, you know, suggests that the front setback on to Linden Street needs to be greater. You'll have, uh, an understanding with, as an outcome from your meeting with the Conservation Commission of how far back you can go in the rear. Also, the question, uh, as already pointed out about the staircase in the front, we are repositioning that question on, you know, you know, as well on on height, I think perhaps maybe uh, res- unresolved. We also have not resolved the question of density. And I don't intend for us to resolve any of that tonight. It can't, it will be in, all of the, will be informed as a result of a comprehensive, robust community engagement process. But I am curious, how did you arrive at the density of two hundred and fifty or, uh, units here or twenty five units an acre? How did you arrive at that number?
Let me turn that over to Dan, who has been leading this effort here.
Uh, so we, we came, we came through to two fifty two. Uh, this is not sort of a, a definitive number. The original brief given to us as part of the conceptual design study was to understand density in terms of what the site can support based on the setbacks geometry, the neighborhood, the height, uh, a- as well as the, the, the narrowness shape of the site and and so on. There are another aspect here too, is the ability to face. There's currently one hundred fifty two, twenty three buildings on site. Um, the Newton Housing can't build them all at the same time. So there is a certain logic and the site lends itself to phase one A, and that's why you're seeing phase one A, phase one B, phase two. Uh, and and as as part, and 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 finally, there's also a, a financial sort of uh, ability to support the number to to in the future. So our original brief was anywhere at least minimum replace one hundred fifty two units. Uh, and it can go as high as three hundred when we first started the conceptual study. And then based on working back and looking at the height of the building as three stories and partial four stories in phase two. And also the ability to support zero point five parking, uh, and then the ability to to sort of shape the building itself. All of this derived at, uh, seventy two units in phase one A, seventy two units in phase one B, and one hundred and eight units and or one hundred plus units in phase two. And and this from our perspective, at the the conclusion of the conceptual study and and also based on a variety of other criteria such as parking, traffic, impact to this neighborhood, that seems to be sort of the right, uh, the, the right number. Um, and 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 the reason I'll, I'll, I'll touch a little bit on why seventy two in phase one A, again, that touches on base is that currently Linden Street has eighteen one or eighteen buildings with four studio units each, which closes seventy two. So if we are, our ability to build seventy two units, that seems to become the magic number in phase one A that allows then the phase one B to proceed without real, uh, or drastic relocation. So these things were sort of thought through in terms of deriving as some of these, these numbers. Uh, as you can see, the site currently on Linden Street, the Linden property sort of divides itself based on that intermediate parking between those two, uh, two buildings. Um, and and in our current design, we, we were able to to maintain sort of eight, uh, or eight units, if you will, or, or sorry, eighteen units in phase one or in all of the Linden Street. So that eighteen, or sorry, that seventy two units can all be absorbed into phase one A.
Can I add, uh, an incredibly important point I don't want to overlook here, uh, because we have many uh, NHA tenants watching tonight and our residents, one of the things they're very concerned about is temporary tenant relocation. And that is a number one pri- our priority for us to recognize that the people are living in these buildings over on the left hand side, these eight buildings, uh, thirty two units. The, the, these are these people's homes and we have to have a total respect for that. Um, we need to find them the right place for them to live temporarily. There will be an individual plan for each tenant. It's not going to be one cookie cutter approach that, um, you know, fits all ones, size fits all. It's, uh, one of the things we will be working on during the schematic design phase. Um, and, um, and part of the reason for doing this design with the two identical U-shaped buildings, um, is it means that, uh, once we get through that first phase one A, uh, then everybody can move back in and we can then, uh, we have, as we refer to it in schools, we have our own swing space where we can do the rest of the project. Um, and, um, so I just want to make sure that the board knows that that's a important factor, um, as well. And and Dan had to struggle with that in in terms of coming up with the right approach.
I appreciate that. So it sounds like, uh, part of this had to do with finding a process to minimize the disruption of the existing tenant community on the one hand. And on, on the other hand, as every builder, every developer does, when they look at a piece of land, what's the highest and best use? And, uh, that's, you know, with those elements in mind uh, and the character of the, you know, the neighborhood. Um, it sounds like that's how you arrived at your density. So, um,
And financing. So not to be underestimated is how big a lift, how heavy of the lift it is to find the money to actually do this project, which, uh, Margaret Brandon and her team have been working on in parallel. And so Dan has had some input.
Reg, does that mean that it's more difficult or easier to finance two hundred and fifty units as opposed to a hundred and fifty units?
Um, may I invite Margaret to comment on that, um?
Um, really depends on what the underlying operating subsidy is for all of the hundred, our two hundred fifty two units. Um, and I think, you know, we absolutely have to replace for the state, the hundred and fifty two existing state, um, public housing units. Um, and to the extent we have, um, additional operating subsidy after that, um, it, it, uh, may make it easier to, to do the financing. Um, but that's the piece that we're showing, why we're working on, you know, we have a clear path for three, two, seven, two unit buildings or a third path with a hundred and fifty two units, but we need to really, um, evaluate, investigate, what resources are that would be available for the, um, additional units to bubble up.
So not just, uh, construction costs, but then operating is deeply affordable housing for the rest, you know, for the indefinite future.
And as mentioned earlier, you know, we're finding high interest rates. I haven't seen nine percent on, on any of my housing deals, but you know, clearly interest rates have risen over the last year, um, and construction costs continue to be, um,
Big challenge.
That's helpful. I appreciate that, uh, you know, those answers to the questions. I think also, if I understand correctly, um, uh, Lee, that, and Reg, the town is going to engage a consultant. I think to, you know, advise the town and as well on, you know, the process and the financing and um, uh, for the project. Is that right, Lee?
That's, yes, I believe that that's the case.
It is correct, and the RFP is already out and I think due back in a few days here, um.
So that consultant may also, uh, you know, uh, inform some of the decisions that we have to make and part of the process going forward. Natasha, did you want to add something?
I know there's an RFP that, that, another, the outer is of the same RFP.
Um, well, I think there's two RFPs or two fin- you know, funding things that could be confused. Um, there is, um, an RFP for, uh, a housing consultant that un- understands on a deep basis how the financing is done and how we refer to loosely as the financial layer cake comes together in order to be able to finance these projects and be able to advise the town and the CPC on that topic. And then there's also um, uh, the, uh, home committee that I think is also going to be receiving some town financial support, but I'm not quite sure what they're going to be doing there. So, but anyway, for this project, yes, the answer is for that and the process in general of doing these sort of, uh, large scale, um, deeply affordable housing, um, redevelopment.
Is it another architect or is it?
No, it's a financial consultant, not an architect kind of RFP. I can send you, I'll send Alex the RFP and she can send it around to anybody who wants to have it here.
That's helpful. Um, thank you, uh, very much. I'd also like to, um, note for the record that we've received an email, uh, I can't remember offhand the date from, um, uh, a number of residents, uh, at, uh, on Sylvan Street, uh, including, and I think led by, uh, Morris Singer, um, which commented on a number of elements, including landscaping, building height, the density, the massing in addition to the parking. And we want to make sure that, you know, as, as we consider all of these and other elements, you know, that we're not having spillover parking and off-street parking on, you know, the nearby street, you know, on the neighboring street. So we want to ensure that uh, the sufficient parking, we'll have to dig in a little deeper uh, with your actual metrics of what your findings are for your current condition with parking. So, um, you know, we look forward to doing that. Do you have anything else to add, Reg, at this time?
I think this has been very thorough and incredibly helpful to us. And I, I, uh, thank the, the board for, um, um, for all the input and we'll continue to be working closely with staff all summer here. And, uh, if anybody has any second or third thoughts, I hope you all summer here. And uh, if if anybody has any second or third thoughts, I hope you will pass along um, to us so we can get this thing right.
I would, just to shape a little bit of the process going forward. I would like to see us have probably the first community meeting. It may be regarded as a hearing. I haven't resolved that yet in uh, in September. And I would expect by then, as you had noted, to have you know, the completed, not just conceptual drawings, but the schematics. I would like to see um, I would like to see you know, the cur- uh, uh, zone, uh, you know, dimensional comparison, a chart, you know, that we find on other site plans that show the current condition to the proposed condition. Um, I think we found a number of opportunities here tonight and a number of solutions. And I think we still have some more questions. I'd like to see that, uh, again, by late September, we have the first of two or maybe three hearings or community meetings. Um, that will help us finalize what the zoning ultimately will be. And of course, along the way, the planning board has to resolve whether it chooses to be the uh, entity, uh, the proponent of the article at town meeting. But we owe embark to do that.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I I have a question.
Yes, please.
You you're talking about the dimensional comparison, uh, con- uh, current versus proposed. When you say current, are you talking about uh, the structures that exist on the ground now? Are you talking about the dimensional um, uh, provisions of the underlying zoning, namely the single residence B and the general residence?
Uh, it's a great question. I I think in fact, what will be helpful is uh, is really all three. We want to compare the underlying uh, the underlying zoning. And uh, uh, but more, but also, you know, the current condition with respect to the existing housing through Needham Housing Authority uh, and the new um, uh, you know, the proposed zoning. Uh, Jean, on on the owl, when I, when I began my answer to uh, to Bob's uh, question, I think I saw you had a reaction uh, to my response. I wasn't sure if you wanted to correct me on something.
Um, I don't think so, but before everybody leaves, I had one more question, and that has to do with timing. If that's okay, um. I know that um, originally it was thought of bringing this to this fall's town meeting. The the idea was we'll get our zoning in October and we will apply for the funding. Under this new scenario of getting the zoning in the annual town meeting, what are the deadlines for? When are you going to apply for the funding? And when are you going to get the funding if you're successful?
So even though we won't have the zoning in place this this fall, my recommendation would still be to submit an application if nothing um, other than to make sure we're on the radar screen for for the state. My my sense is the once they see we don't have zoning, there will be ample other projects that are that do have zoning, so we won't be invited to actually submit an application. So then that would put us in a situation where um, the following year, that October, we would submit a pre-application, we'd have the zoning in place. And then I would expect that we'd be invited to submit a a formal application, which is done usually in January, with the idea that the funding would be announced. Um, I think there's last round um, applications that happened in past January, about funding like the second or third uh, in May. Um, one worry that I have relates to um, as a right versus special permit. And and one of the comments that's going to be to attorney smart about is just, you know, if it goes to town meeting and town meeting approved, that I believe there's a review process with attorney general.
Yes.
That would then extend out, I think it's ninety days usually, and it could go longer, which then that means there'd be uncertainty about the new zoning in place through potentially August end of September, which would impact that our ability to go through a special permit process that then if you're thinking about October as the deadline again, really pushes up against that date. Um, and and I don't know, you know, you you all are better at reconciling those kinds of things.
I'm I'm a little confused. Are you saying that for October of twenty twenty-four, we need to have issued our cycle? We need, assuming that it's actually right. Uh, we need to have had our site plan review by then?
Correct. Because you want to be able to demonstrate that you have the approval from the, from, you know, from the site plan process for the funding application. They don't want to have uncertainty that somehow it's going to be delayed through this, you know, and and not they don't want to give money to projects that are going to be in an extended review process or still.
Can we, can we go forward with site plan review if we haven't heard from the attorney general?
No. So you're saying that the actual permit has to have been issued by the planning board or that the zoning has to be in place?
The there's, you have to, as a project has to go through the zoning. It's not just that the zoning is in place. But that the project itself has been reviewed and whatever processes, whether it's a variance, special permit, site plan review has been concluded and the project found eligible or gotten the special permit that um, it would, it would um, require to then be able to move forward to
Right.
um, um, being able to pull a building for. All right. You don't have to build a sp- building permit, but you have to be I would say shovel ready. Um, they sometimes allow you that, you know, with old Sarah, you can submit your application in October, but if you can't, if you don't have your um, permitting stuff behind you, we're not going to invite you in for your final application. So, you know, it it creates some uncertainty, but you can, if you can get it all put together before the holidays and, you know, it gives you potentially another you know, six or six or eight.
Probably ask Chrissy for an opinion.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I would speak further to that. What what we're, what we're is that town meeting is going to vote to approve the the zoning. Uh, and that during the attorney general review process, review period, uh, the housing authority go ahead and file a special permit, uh, of the site family view application, uh, and and go through the the public process that's involved there and do a new design review and so forth. Uh, and it seems to be the the board um, uh, if it was comfortable with the with the project, you know, as it gets changed in the course of that, in the course of that process, would issue of 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 a decision on the site plan application, uh, which is uh, which becomes is conditional, right? Only becomes effective when the zoning is approved by uh, by the attorney general.
I think um, uh, we should probably get an opinion from our new town council at the time when COVID was reviewing the A T P, the position we put, start the process that until we have the approval from the A G. But um, I think we should get a formal opinion to speak on that.
We have projects also where sometimes the enabling work, like the utility work and all that counts um, to get the project started, you know, when we get approvals, because that work has to happen anyway. So you have a shovel ready, but it's for enabling rather than the building itself.
If I may, I I I did, I did suggest to to Reg the other day, but that's a a process could that it it could be underway. Uh, you know, earlier rather than later, where there are meetings with uh, fire department, D P W, the town engineer, uh, the building commissioner uh, for global plans and and, you know, look at, look at the utilities and and all the other kinds of things that get reviewed at the town level. And that would help the process as well. And you're going to need your conservation commission order conditions. Right. By October also. I'm not sure whether that, what Margaret's take on on that is.
I mean, that's basically a permit.
It is a permit, yeah.
I I would want to add to Bob's comment that I'll talk about it is my process, uh, which is uh, this is second time I've done a project like this. This is my second, you know, hopefully learned some mistakes. But I I would welcome input from the fire chief and police chief and the board of health and the other, you know, um, stakeholders, I'll call them in town actually this summer, um, to make sure that I give that kind of input to Dan and his team so that they're doing the schematic design right the first time around as opposed to discovering something next fall that is not add to the you know, to the expectations of any of those entities. So if there's a more efficient way than me going around and having one-on-one meetings with all these entities, I would welcome um, any suggestions you might have.
Yeah, and and if I could follow up with that, um, the site plan review is an odd process in that it is nothing in this state zoning act about site plan review. Um, so it it wouldn't surprise me. I mean, it as compared with a special permit, that I think clearly you can't begin the process unless you have the zoning and all approved and everything. The site brother review might very well be perceived differently by our town council. Um, and um, if it isn't, if we have to wait until attorney general approval is and then start the process, I don't see what the difference is between site plan approval process-wise and special permit. I realize that there's no, yes, no possibility with special permit, but process and how long it takes and everything would be about the same. Um, so if you can't begin it early, um, that I think is hard. Remember the site plan review process was the eighty-eight central, it went on and on?
Yeah, I'm, I would, I would hope that there wouldn't be the kind of uh, neighborhood discontent, let's put it that way. Neighborhood pushback
Yeah.
on this project, if there was the sixteen eighty-eight. I mean, this is this is replacing existing N H A housing. So it's not like it's a new you know, granted, you're going from, how many did you say? We have a hundred and fifty units now?
One fifty-two.
One one fifty-two up to two fifty-four. Which is, which is great, actually. You know, we need the extra housing, the the people that we're trying to serve here.
Mm-hmm. You know. Well, our our door is open to the neighbors and hopefully they will learn that, um, that, you know, we're you know, we all have to work together to figure out what the right.
And that letter that we got from the Silver Road neighbors, I mean, these are people, I thought that was a very well drafted letter. Um, but clearly, these are people who who are in favor of the project. They just want to see some some fine tuning. I mean.
Yeah, Mr. Singer.
The devil is always in the details.
Mr. Singer, I've, you know, talked individually with Mr. Singer. He came to our second neighbors meeting.
Yeah.
And he was unclear as to how he should have his in, make his input into the process. And so I um, gave him the email addresses and told him how it's normally done. And that's why you do have the the email memo from him and uh, we're committed to continuing to do that as an open and transparent process all the way through.
Before next May town meeting. I mean, it seems as though we have an awful lot of buy-in, well, hopefully potential buy-in, renovation to the community around there. And then once we get through that, then we're going to the attorney general, then we're going for review. At that point, it seems like everyone, hopefully everyone would have a very open process to give their.
Absolutely. And and just to remind everybody, buddy of what I think you already know, but hasn't been brought up here tonight. But we will be back to the C P C for four, five, six million dollars of additional town C P A funding in order to bridge the gap between what Margaret and they will raise from third-party sources and, you know, make the numbers work. So there's a very open process that will be going on at that time as well. Uh, that will need to be coordinated with whatever the planning board is doing um, during that time period.
Will that be before or after?
It will be, both will be on coming in uh, warrant article at the same time.
Okay, so you'll be applying to to the C P C this December?
Yes.
Correct. Jean will still be on the C P C then.
Are you, Reg, are you looking also for additional funding this October?
Uh, no, we're not. We we had signaled that we would be doing that when we thought we had the plan to get the zoning by October, but it's not necessary to do an out-of-cycle um, C P A funding application anymore. So it'll be for the regular annual cycle, starting December first.
Very good. Um, unless my colleagues have any other comments or questions, you know, there's still some things that we have to, you know, resolve here, uh, including the the process, which we'll discuss and uh, obviously we'll be in touch. Um, you know, Reg to uh, um, on the process and also, uh, you know, and all of these other items. Uh, thank you very much for coming in for the appointment. Uh, it's close to nine o'clock. It's you know, and this was just, we didn't have a full presentation, you know, for it. So I just want all of us to be mindful that when we do have you know, a community meeting or a hearing on this, uh, you know, that uh, we haven't even at this point, wouldn't have had an opportunity for public comment yet. So, um, I just want all of us to be realistic in our expectations of you know, how many meetings and how long these meetings will run for. So thank you very much. I think this is an excellent progress. And we look forward to working together collaboratively to you know, to get something great working here for everybody.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you all.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. This leads us to our second item in our agenda, which is the decision for uh, major project site plan special permit number two thousand twenty-three dash zero two for Shallits Needham Inc. Doing business as Sweet Boba, uh, for the property located at uh, one zero three two Great Plain. Uh, after you, um. Did someone?
I'll be right back. I just need to, I'm going to rest really quick.
Uh, who else does too? Do you want to take a five-minute recess?
I'll take a couple of minutes.
Yeah, let's take a recess.
Okay. We are recessed, uh, well, uh, it's eight forty-nine. We're recessed. We'll come back at uh, eight fifty-four. Hmm. Is everybody back? I think the Zoom is muted. Hello, perfect. Already that's a friendly wave.
So Paul is not back yet, but I don't know. You ready to start?
Already, whatever you're, whatever you're enjoying there. It looks pretty good, man. I wish you could send. Just right through the internet there, eh? Very good. Next item on our agenda. Is the decision. Paul Steptow, we expect him back in a moment. We, I believe we received comments from Paul in advance of tonight. With the decision and I think you and Alex had modified the decision. And incorporated those modifications into the decision. Already, did you have any?
No, that's how the red line come through. I don't have any comments. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Dean.
Natasha?
No comments.
Jean, do you have any additional comments or questions on the decision?
Yes, I do. In section three point one two, having to do with the picking up of solid waste. It seems to me you've got weekdays between the hours of seven. AM and six PM. Okay, fine, those are weekdays. And I realize that this is a block that presently doesn't have residential uses and it doesn't have any residential uses right nearby. But our zoning is such presently, our current zoning. That we hope to develop mixed use. And we have to be careful about what the rules are we set with regard to noise. So weekday, seven AM to six PM, okay. But Saturday, Sunday and holidays, you're going to have the dump truck coming in at seven AM? To one PM? That doesn't make any sense. Why wouldn't it be like eleven AM? To six PM on Saturday, Sunday and holidays? In the morning.
I understand. Lee, it's a good question. Lee, how did you arrive at the Saturday, Sunday and holiday hours?
I think we probably use the same hours that we have used over at French Press.
French Press.
Right, because there's something.
Really? We did this at French Press? I wish I didn't notice it there. But I just don't understand. If you're going to abbreviate the hours as we're doing on weekends. Why not abbreviate in the direction of making those. Noisy trucks come later in the morning rather than.
Yeah, actually, French Press, maybe. It might have been a typo on this one. I don't know. The French Press was nine to one on Saturday, Sunday and holidays.
Even that is better, yeah.
The week, I think French Press was the foundation.
Okay, well, if we make it nine, I would be okay with it, but.
Okay, so just to bring Paul up to speed because he's just coming in. Paul, I've, I've run through the rest of the board. Jean is the only one that had an additional comment. So far, her comment relates to section three point one two. And more specifically dealing with the waste pickup on the weekend and holiday hours. Which currently set out from starting at seven AM. And she's suggesting that we modify those hours to begin at nine AM. And I, you know, I support that. Does the rest of the board? Incur with that?
Well, I mean, so, so that's something that in theory we've, we've been standards, standardized those times.
Yes, we did that at work French Press. So the seven, I think, was a mistake with a typo on this decision.
So three point one two, it should be seven AM to one PM on Saturday, Sunday and Halloween.
No, it should be nine, nine AM, should be nine.
Nine, isn't that what I said?
Oh, I do want to just say. The kebab place, whose name I forget, a couple of doors down at ten fifty-six Great Plain Avenue. They are listed as, their decision says seven to one Saturday, Sunday and holidays. So that might be where that was pulled from. As an FYI.
Well.
Not, it should be nine to one.
I think it should be nine to one, just to be reasonable.
I'm not disagreeing, but obviously some of it should have some relationship to where the business is, right? And what's near it. And for example, French Press, there's no homes right there where, you know, Boba, it's a little, it's a little closer to where some homes. So, I mean, I hand, I don't know why we can't have a bearing depending on where it is. Am I mistaken? Is that, is that thinking incorrect as far as where the businesses should determine that?
Yes, I think what's more flexible, for example, in the New England Business Center. Example quote, and it's better, but it is nine to one at French.
That's a reason, I think that, already that understanding makes sense. Your approach makes sense. Should we take a, now a vote on the relief requested? Would someone like to make a motion? And then we'll make a motion on the decision separately. It looks like, it looks like Jean's preparing to make the motion.
Well, yeah, we. Well, the motion, where is it?
It's on page five, on page five.
Oh, there it is. All right. I move that with regard to the, the. Premises. The petition of Shallots Needham Inc. Doing Business as Sweet Boba. And visit assesses. Oh, excuse me, one oh three two Great, at one oh three two Break Plain Avenue. That we grant the requested major project site plan review special permit under section seven point four of the zoning bylaw. And the requested special permit under section three point two point two of the bylaw for an eat-in. Takeout establishment accessory to food retail operation in the Center Business District. And the requested special permit under section three point two point two of the bylaw for more than one resident. Non-residential use on a lot. Where such uses are not detrimental to each other and are compliance, in compliance with all other requirements of this bylaw. And the requested special permit under section five point one point one point six of the bylaw. To waive strict adherence with the requirements of section five point one point two. Pertaining to required parking and section five point one point three pertaining to off-street parking requirements. I, I make that motion.
Second, we have a motion by Jean, a second by Paul, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come. Go ahead, Paul.
I said well stated, you.
With no further, with no further discussion, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker. Natasha Spada. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're unanimously decided. And then would somebody like to make a motion to approve the decision as modified tonight and earlier today in red line?
So moved, second.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Artie, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker. Natasha Spada.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. We unanimously voted to approve the amended decision. Thank you all very much. This brings us now to a discussion. Of our planning priorities. This. So I'm going to explain what I've, what I've prepared. Because it's really exists in two parts and it might be helpful. Alex, if you're able to bring up on the computer. The Word document of our priorities and then also the Excel. And we'll toggle back and forth, I'm sure.
I thought you were going to share your screen and do it. I, I don't have it up and I can't access.
Okay, bear with me.
That you're, I would have had to have it up. I thought we talked about how you were going to do that. Sorry, Adam.
Uh, no problem, bear with me. I'll share my screen and. First of all, does everyone have a printout of this or? Easily accessible on their computer? The priorities.
By the way, I can't share PDF. I just can't share the Excel or the Word. So PDF would be helpful. I can do that.
All right. I need, so I'm going to share this, so. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's fun then. Good. So I've prepared. These priorities based on ongoing conversations that we've been having. And based on what we. You know, know collectively that, you know, that we're really trying to flag for action and I broke it up by. Categories. So this is, this is a list of, it's like an inventory of the priorities that we want to proceed with. It's not to say that all of this is going to happen by October or by any other date. We're going to now advance to. An Excel spreadsheet, which is the planning board schedule, which I prepared. And then with Alex's help. And I will try and share that. As well. Bear with me while I. Bring up that Excel.
So the goal for today is to be able to identify the goals for this year, right?
I'm just trying to get to like, what are we trying to get to? Get to the goals. The goals for, for this year and.
And they don't all have to be figured out, but just understanding which ones are the priorities.
Well, also, so also to kind of. Help shape this map on this Excel spreadsheet. Of what we need to be working on by when in order to kind of. You know, if we're starting with the end in mind, what work? We need to do. So do you actually have the Excel spreadsheet and the Word documents in front of you?
Well, the packet has the PDF of both of those things.
Okay, but does, does anyone have them? Are you, is everyone in the room able to easily access? The Word document and the Excel, because I can't share two screens at once. Jean, you're whole, I see that you have it.
What you had on the screen before?
I'm sorry, yeah, both of them.
Because I'm, I'm just looking at the packet online.
Okay.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so, so if that's what you're calling the Word document, yes.
The Excel sheet is in PDF form within the packet, as is the list of goals.
Thank you very much. That's right. So. For those at home, I'm going to, I'll summarize, we have several categories of priorities that we're looking at. The first is a planning board retreat. I think that it would be productive. That the planning board, you know, embark on. Some additional training and, you know, information. It would probably be done perhaps in a form of a retreat. With town council, with, with Lee and with Alex. And with all of us. What I intend to do is to work with Natasha as vice chair. And with Lee and Alex and Chris to devise a number of modules. That would relate to these and if you have any other topics that you want training on, I think it makes sense to. You know, you know, email myself and Lee. And then, you know, we can add those. I think this training would probably be. An ongoing effort. Particularly, it's, I think it will be helpful with new planning board members. I wish that I had had something like this. When I started. And I think as, as part of the. The, the work product. Will have some kind of a manual or guideline and we'll publish that online as well, so. Members of the public also are able to follow along. And. That'll also identify the process and how we. You know, how we do to get our applications and deal with zoning and, and some of these other elements, so. Natasha, myself, and as I mentioned, you know, we'll start with, with our staff and with Chris. To identify these modules and then we'll lay out a schedule and we'll come back to the full board. With, you know, a proposal for when we're able to. Begin the work of, you know, the retreat to go over these topics, which will include. Elements of the scope and limit of our planning board's authority. Our public communication policy and our community engagement. For zoning in addition to application review. Subdivision, our subdivision control law and regulations and also as we've been dealing with the Public Shade Tree and Scenic Road Acts. There's information there that was new to me when we were dealing with nine twenty South Street. And then I think it will be helpful and we can also do this in part. You know, we'll roundtable this as part of our retreat. What are our zoning best practices? So I look forward to that, but. That kind of summarizes what we're dealing with on the retreat. The next category of items. Are residential zoning amendments. And we know that the Needham Housing Authority is looking to rezone Linden and Chambers. Jean also raised a topic. For affordable housing. Which relates to a provision on our bylaw six point one two, which identifies. That a minimum standard of twelve and a half percent requirement for affordable housing. And I believe, Jean, the neighborhood business in the neighborhood district, neighborhood business district. Uh, and then also, uh, the neighborhood. I believe that's right, the neighborhood business district and. Highway Commercial One, and I think ultimately what you're looking to do is to expand. That um, uh, that uh standard uh townwide, is that correct, Jean?
Uh, yes, so that that standard applies in all of our um, um zones where um. Or starting just with the basics, um, in all of the zones in which multifamily housing is allowed. Um, for example, we had the multi, the multifamily project of, that we approved for um. Uh Honeywell Street. Uh, that didn't require any affordable unit at all. Um.
How many units was that?
That was, that was eight, it was at least eight units and would ordinarily have had at least one affordable unit. And it's just a matter of looking at every one of our zones and I, as part of the housing plan, I did an analysis of this and. Used to document that does lay out exactly uh what's missing in every zone. Now, that doesn't mean, um, and, and the goal is to always use twelve and a half percent, that is, one affordable unit for every eight. Of uh, of units and. Uh, we, there are certain issues that I don't, I don't necessarily want to get into a discussion of. Um, but the, um. What if the development has fewer than eight units? Presently, if it has six units, we, we round up and say you still have to have one if you have six units. But if you're four or five or three, there's no requirement. Um, I think that we should at least explore the concept. Of. If you've got anything from three to seven units. Um, you can buy a unit, great. But, um, the alternative is to pay into the um town's affordable housing trust fund. In proportion. Uh, like if you're only gonna have three units, it's, you know, much less than if you're going to have seven units, you know. Um, that, that would be a payment into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And um, so I'd like to explore that, that concept. Um, and also, it, another thing is, it may be that for some types of our developments, will we have a ten percent? Uh, for example, the elder services and uh. Uh, we have ten percent, I'm not sure if there's a special reason to keep that at ten percent and not re- increase it to twelve and a half, but. We'll consider that if there are special circumstances. The goal is to go to twelve and a half. And at the same time, go down to three units, but allow the um, money, the monetary donation.
That's really a, an inclusionary zoning by law that townwide and, and it's, and it's consistent in terms of, of its application across the.
That's a very good word for me, thank you, Lee.
So. Uh, so that's a very helpful uh additional information, Jean, thank you very much, so that'll be. You know, one of the uh action items that we're looking to. Um, you know, discuss, determine if it's something that we want to embark on and then we'll get it into the schedule, so. And a, a number of these priorities. Are gonna be, you know, it's not just about getting to October town meeting of this year and May town meeting. Next year, a number of these items are gonna be carried over, over the course of, you know, several years, but. Uh, I think, uh, you know, this is a very good helpful start in our catalog of. Priorities, the next one in our residential amendments. Uh, is to reconsider detached ADUs. Um, uh, A, do we want to do that? And B, if so, when would we consider doing that? I. Myself wouldn't think to do that. Uh, before May of. Uh, next year, but if the board decided to do that, I, you know, we'll discuss when I, we talk through this in the schedule. Uh, you know, what it would be necessary in order to achieve a zoning change. In May, uh, dealing with detached ADUs. Uh, MBTA communities compliance. That specifically is an example of something that. Will start this year. Through the, in part through the Hone. The Housing Needham uh Committee, which. Will be a, a joint committee among. Ourselves, the, uh, the select board and a representative from FinCom and. Uh, a number of other uh, residents. Among different categories and with a view to. Uh, pass. Uh, our MBTA compliance uh for October of twenty twenty four. And there'll be a number of public uh, community meetings. That will occur, we'll have our zoning uh change as well to, uh, to deal with. And again, that'll start this year, but it's gonna span. You know, through October of next year. Um, and then in addition to this, uh. There's been a number of um. Uh, residents in the community that have. Expressed concern in part on, on uh, the uh teardowns. But what I really understand with the concept of the teardown is not the teardown itself. But really with what it's, what's actually being replaced. And the, and floor area ratio is a large part of that. It was a large honey, housing uh review committee. Which uh, I think was successful. Uh, in some modifications. We've received and it's in our packet uh for this meeting. An email from um, from a resident uh, from Joe Matthews. Uh, who expressed concern about. How we treat floor area ratio and whether we include. Uh, other livable space, which would be a finished basement and or a finished attic, so. You know, do we want to pick that up and when do we want to pick that up?
Yeah, I would consider, I would consider that Mr. Chair almost like a loophole that got through. We, we was never intended, I believe, to get through where. Well, where, where, I mean, the length for this, where, where, where a builder builds a project and let's say initially the third floor, which is a. You're easily accessible walk up third floor initially is not finished. Then it's built, then it's, then it's immediately finished afterwards, something like that, so. I think there's a loophole in there, which is allowing these houses to get extremely large and it was not intent, I don't, I don't think it was intended for that to happen.
Paul, did you have a response?
Yeah, because um, I understood. Mister Matthews letter. You said that there are a number of residents. Who have. Brought this up, but I've only seen two letters from Joe Matthews.
We received. We received two mad letters from Joe Matthews, uh, and yet. I've had calls from other residents. And I, um. Uh, and I've had multiple conversations, it's come up in the context of uh ADUs. And how we treat uh floor area ratio when we're dealing with ADUs, whether it's in the basement or. Even if it was uh detached, um.
So, let me. Let me then, you know, I, I. After reading Mister Matthews' letter. I went to the by law. And we read the by law. And we've got the floor area ratio. That has um. Point three eight or point three six for area ratio, which is, which is basically two floors. Um, and then you can. Have a finished basement, you can have a, a uh. Uh. You can, you can have an attic, possibly you finish. And then we also have lot area coverage requirements in single residence D. And I'm thinking between the four. I don't, I don't necessarily know what is a problem, and so I'm thinking what I would like to get. Possibly from Mister Matthews. Is a list of houses that he's really complaining about. He says in his letter that he goes jogging and he sees these big houses. And has a problem with them, he thinks that they are in violation. I'd like to take a look at these houses and see what they look like. Because conceptually, and that's all that I can go by. If we've got a twelve thousand square foot lot. That had. That's, is that point three six or point three eight? I think it's.
Point three six.
So we've got a. Right. But we've got a twelve thousand square foot lot. Ratio of point three eight. That's forty five hundred and sixty square feet. Over two floors. We also have a lot coverage. Of twenty five percent.
Twenty five to thirty five, it's, it's a function of, well, it's a function of district and it's a function of the size of the property.
Right, so a twelve thousand square foot lot in. Twenty five percent, so a twelve thousand square foot lot. The house can only cover three thousand square feet. So you're going to have.
That's the footprint.
That's the footprint.
Yeah.
For three thousand square foot. House. Is the footprint. Two floors can only have forty five hundred square feet. Okay, you're only gonna have two, two and a half story houses. Because we have height limitations. You know, I'd like to see these houses. That Joe Matthews is complaining about and see what they really look like, he's saying that. There's a house that's for sale, that's. That's listed for fifty two hundred, fifty three hundred square feet of living space. And he's saying, well, that doesn't meet the requirements, we're letting them get away with something and I want to take a look at that house and say.
So.
Really a house that doesn't fit into the neighborhood, that doesn't conceptually, aesthetically. Meet what the large zoning. Large house zoning committee. Was trying to do, because if we've got a house. That's only twenty five percent of the lot coverage. And it's fitting forty five hundred square feet on two floors, so they finished the basement, why do I care that they have a finished basement? It doesn't detract from the look of the house from the outside.
So, Paul.
A half story that's finished.
Yep.
You know, a half story house, why do I care?
To that point, I understand the question, to that end, I've asked Alex and Lee to reach out to Mister Matthews. So we can have an appointment, you know, like we did tonight. Uh, and see if he's available, uh, you know, in July. Um, you know, to, uh, you know, to come in and, you know, and discuss it. And, and we can ask him to have a number of those examples. Uh, you know, in advance, uh, you know, for that, you know, brief discussion, doesn't have to be.
I'd like to be able to drive by the houses.
So we. Okay, so as an action item, Lee.
Houses and I agree with him, but it may be that I don't.
Okay, Jean, go ahead.
Um. Back in about, it was probably two thousand nineteen that I began this study. Because I had served on the large house committee. And I, um, the changes that were made as a result of that committee were fairly minor changes. And. Without prejudging, I really wanted to know what difference did these changes make? And I started to collect and us, uh, Karen Sinnerver helped me to create a list. Of teardowns and um, new building permits. For the whole year before. Uh, the changes were even advertised for hearing, you know, uh, and. A whole year after it was all we, all in effect, you know, uh, Attorney General approved and everything. Was all set to start meeting with the building inspector and the engineering department and review the plans. And then COVID hit. And you couldn't go and sit uh with the engineers, the building inspector, look at the plan, so I, I just gave it up. But when Paul says we should really be looking at this. I, I, I guess the question I have for our planning staff is. Is there? Um, the ability of the staff we have or staff we might gain to help us? To do a study like that?
I think it's a question of what are the priorities really for the next? Year and a half, and um, I think we are, I think the MBTA Communities Act. And the planning around that, it's gonna just take a huge amount of time. I think the uh work that's coming out of the um, the energy group in terms of sustainability. The modifications that we want to make to zoning to reflect the recommendations that are coming out of that study. Are gonna take a lot of time. I think if it's the staff capacity. It was two things, really, are those two guys, those two items.
So the climate action, the climate action, well.
The climate action, I mean, really, and the zoning that's gonna be required to implement those recommendations. And the MBTA, MBTA Communities Act. I figure are just really gonna take up most of our time and energy.
Plus Linden Chambers.
And Linden Chambers, and so.
To just focus on this one issue of addicts and basements. And say, oh, we made a mistake, let's change it. Um, that we should take a more comprehensive look. Um, but if we don't have time to do that now.
Yeah.
October, but May is a possibility, but I do think that. Having a, you know, having a house built where. You know, they haven't finished a whole another floor, which is totally accessible for full living space. And they, and they, they're, and that's, but it's built. Then it's, then.
But if it doesn't increase the size of the house, why do we care?
It increases the mass, the mass of the house changes, the height of the house would change.
The house, the mass of the house doesn't change if it's a finished basement.
The height of the house would change.
Well, if you're creating a third story.
I think when the committee was doing it, the philosophy was the basement is underground, you know.
No, I, I, I get the basement part, no, I get that.
I think, I think on the half story, I mean, there was also some relaxation on the, it's down to how dormers could be used, which is how long a. Third and half story to be expanded at, but if the philosophy was that the half story in the basement. Doesn't count, and the only thing we're gonna count were gonna be that first floor and seventh floor.
I mean, I, I don't have, I, I don't have, personally, I'm a big problem with the basement pitch. But having the third, I'm gonna call it third floor. The essentially complete third floor living space, which is happening all the time, I see it happening, I, I mean, houses where it's happening all the time.
But isn't that, don't we have a height constraint?
There's a height constraint of thirty five feet.
Yeah, but there's a height constraint, but it, but you still, but the height, height constraint allows for that to occur. But the, but the loophole is the floor area ratio is not supposed to allow that to occur.
But if we have a house, if we have a house.
One at a time, guys, guys, timeout, timeout. We have.
Please, Adam, please, let me respond to Artie.
I will in a session. And Paul.
Come, please, may respond to Artie.
I, in a minute.
It's not your turn, Adam.
I'm not, I'm not commenting on, on, on the question at hand. I, Paul, am about to comment. On the order of our discussion. Because, and it might be because I'm on a computer. I heard two people talking at once and I can't tell who they were. All I was going to say. Was that, and request that we just please speak. One at a time, that's all, Paul. The floor is back to you.
Thank you. So we have a house that's thirty five. Feet high. That's two and a half stories. Okay? And it's occupied on the first and the second floor. And the third and that half story is an attic, it's empty. The house, the structure of the house in the neighborhood is set. And the fact that you can finish that half story. And have a bedroom up there. And maybe a bathroom. Doesn't change. The nature of the house in the neighborhood.
But if you weren't, but if that wasn't allowed. As in a full access after the fact, it wouldn't be built in the first place, so you wouldn't have.
That's not the question, the question is do we allow a thirty five foot high house?
That is.
That's a question of changing the height.
That is the question, the question, the question actually is. What, what is counted? Towards that floor area ratio, now I, I have no problem not counting the basement. But if, but if a builder's gonna build a third floor. Two and a half or whatever called, if, if, if something's gonna be built where it is easily expanded to a full living space. Then it should be counted to the floor area ratio.
So I, I understand, I understand your position. And I understand Jean and Natasha and. And Paul, your position, we have. You know, I think at this point we can agree to disagree for a moment on the substance of it.
Oh, let's get that.
The question before us, the question before us now. Is, you know, is this something that we want to pursue? I think it's a little preliminary. I think, Lee, what we are looking for is some additional information. From Joe Matthews of some specific references that the board can look at. And then we can, after we look at that, we can determine. Uh, if we want to put this on our schedule. And then map out when and how we would go about. Uh, examining this question and uh taking any, choosing to take any additional action, this is just. To identify some. Of these, um, you know, issues that have come up for the board, so. To identify some of these, um, you know, issues that have come up for the board. So. I'd like to, you know, advance now to the commercial zoning amendments, if I may. So.
Do you wanna say something?
Yeah, I wanted to say something. So it sounds like, Adam, from what Lee and Alex are saying is that for the next year and a half. Or, or two years maybe, or, um, at least a year and a half. That they can only, they only have capacity for the MBTA communities and for any climate action items. Beyond the London Chambers and anything else that comes before us. So I guess my question, uh, looking, you know, at the entire list. Is what can we do as board members that doesn't require Lee? Um, or Alex, that within these things that we would be willing to do? Or is this something for, you know, after some of these initiatives take place? Because it doesn't sound like there's any capacity for them unless we do it ourselves or someone is appointed in town.
I think when we deal with the schedule, we'll be able to. Identify the capacity. I'm not saying that we go through a process to make. To resolve a question of the floor area ratio and make a zoning bylaw change. If we wanted to do it, when would that reasonably occur? And that's when we switch over to the Excel spreadsheet. And we start looking at the schedule and figuring out, you know, what actually want to take when.
I guess I'm saying the same thing about the commercial zoning amendments. I mean, there's just a lot of initiatives here. So I guess, I don't know what everyone else thinks, but if they can only have capacity for so much. I, I feel like you'd have to prioritize these when time comes up, but I don't think that they can do much else is what I'm hearing. Is that right, or?
I think, I mean, I think the MBTA Communities Act and the climate action are just gonna, are gonna be.
Take over.
I think they're gonna take over. Maybe there's a couple of things that come up that we, you know, that we, where we, we can, and the housing authority. I mean, these are, those are three major initiatives.
They're major, yeah.
And there's gonna be all kinds of planning work and committee work around just the MBTA Communities Act. Uh, there's gonna be community meetings around what the housing authority is proposing.
Right, um. So, I mean, I could see the, the diversity, equity and inclusivity. This could be something because it's about administrative practices that we could put together something. But, but I think anything related to zoning amendments is gonna be really tough to do.
So let me just.
Yeah.
Jean, I see your, I see your hand up. I'll come to you in a second. So. I'm not saying we have to take, that we're doing, you know, a deep dive into all of these all at once simultaneously. So I, I hear, I hear what you're saying. Eight-eight, we can't just ignore eight-eighty-eight Great Plains. Because that's already coming up. That's, you know, the, the developer wants to come on our, get on our schedule. And I think that's an opportunity for us to talk about a broader zone. Uh, or modifying, uh, um, uh, the overlay and or extending it a little bit. You know, like we had talked about as a board before, about potentially, you know, expanding that to, um, you know, to Warren Street. We also need to, um, uh, um, uh, not, not that whole project, but it may be a different zoning. The point is. Um, you know, on its own, eighty-eighty-eight Great Plain is gonna come, is gonna come in front of us. We can just deal with that as in itself or choose not to. Or, um, you know, you can be proactive with, you know, broader zoning for the area, but we also.
Yeah, would that be part of the MBTA community?
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll be looking at that. I think, uh, MBTA Communities Act, what's appropriate for there, what to help, do we want housing and how? Whether it's done, should it be, should it be done in a mixed use context? So that might be able to be rolled into.
Yeah, I agree.
Communities through a, through a public process.
Yeah.
So. Uh, uh, Jean.
Um, I, uh, I don't want it to be thought that by my saying, we should, we should have a co- more of a comprehensive study of this issue. That I don't think it should be on the list. It should be on the list. Now, uh, maybe we're, we now have it as a goal of having a change in, uh, the fall of two thousand twenty-four. Um, in that, in this regard, with regards to single-family homes and FAR and perhaps other factors. Um, perhaps we, we keep it on the list, but we extend it to, um, the two thousand twenty-five annual town meeting. And that's more realistic.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. That's, we're gonna come to that when we deal with the exchange. And when we deal with the Excel spreadsheet. I just wanted to go through. And identify what these priorities are. With, you know, and then we will talk about, you know, how we can schedule them. I appreciate that comment.
It should be kept as a priority. And I agree with Artie, it should be kept as a priority.
Okay, so.
Floor area ratio and single-family homes.
So that, we're now talking about the commercial zoning amendments. So. So coming up and, you know, in front of us, we'll, you know, we have. Uh, uh, you know, the developer at eighty-eighty-eight Great Plain, uh, is looking to have an appointment and to discuss. You know, rezoning that site. We've talked as a board about potentially. Uh, um, you know, reconsidering the area up to, uh, to Warren. Um, and now, and now we're talking about potentially doing that as part of the MBTA or scheduling that as part of the. Buying it in, into the MBTA, uh, communities, uh, compliance process. There's also a parking bylaw. I'd like to schedule. You know, get that onto the schedule and figure out what we need to do when to modify our townwide. Uh, parking bylaw because we know already it's, it's in effect, it's, uh, inconsistent with really market realities. Um, I, there is, um, uh, you know, unlocking the Charles. I, I think that's, um. That's something that I like to, uh, you know, for us to, to reconsider. That's the area from along the Charles, kind of near Staples. From Highland Avenue up to Central Avenue. And I, I see that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We recently rezoned that area to try to encourage housing in that area. What, why, why are we revisiting it?
Well, I'm not saying that we are. I am, I, what I'm looking at, Paul, is and I understand that that. That that was done, it was done some time ago. And there are some market forces at play, but there always are. And, uh, you know, the zoning amendment that had been, uh, passed earlier hasn't resulted in achieving the goals that we, that were set out. What I look at is a broader picture. And when we see that, you know, we have substantial capital costs coming before the town. You know, by way of two schools and other projects. That if there is an opportunity, that we can uplift, for instance, uh, um. Uh, you know, the, uh, the town revenue from that geographic area. And for instance, ten exit, which is what we're looking at doing potentially with, you know, the Muzzy and Channel Five sites. We ten X that, uh, the, you know, the tax revenue from the town, that's a huge boon to help. Uh, minimize the residential tax burden. So if there is an opportunity to do that in a way that, uh, modifies the uses to attract new uses. Um, you know, and provide additional housing and some other opportunities. And I. I think that's an opportunity for us to be proactive. In, um, you know, in, in reconsidering the, the zoning. Um. And then separately, there's also, you know, a question of mixed-use zoning and where and how, you know, we might allow that. Jean, it looks like you might have a comment here.
Oh, yeah, I just want to understand. Unlocking the Charles, at first I was thinking about. Uh, residential areas over by Dover, and I, I didn't really understand what it was about. But it's, it's the mixed-use overlay district that the focus is on?
It's the mixed-use one-twenty-eight district and Highland Commercial one-twenty-eight district?
I think I would be interested in understanding what the problem is. I mean, from a developer's perspective. I mean, because we, 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 we studied those areas, we rezoned them. They have really a very broad use profile. They've got significant FARs and height advantages. So I guess I would be interested in understanding, is the problem that you're, that you're concerned about. Happening because of some regulatory constraints or is it market-driven?
I agree.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know necessarily that it's regulatory based. I think I'd want to understand. From developers and property owners there, are they, what are their constraints? Are they experiencing constraints or do they just have buildings that are occupied, they own the land and they've got a nice rental income coming in and they're not interested in changing it? So I think we need to understand what that issue is.
Uh, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And then in addition to that, we have mixed-use, uh, zoning. Uh, to reconsider it. Uh, Jean, did this originate with you?
Uh, I think yes. Well, also, uh, it was something that was mentioned in the housing plan. Um, that we really, we, we had this, um, mixed-use zoning that we put in place. Um, gee, by now, I don't know, almost twenty years ago, uh, eighteen or so years ago. And we've had very few developments. And just taking a look at, uh, again, when we're talking about regulatory constraints, is it regulatory constraints or is it simply? Market or the type of owners that we have who are conservative about change? Um, but our down, Chestnut Street is particularly. Yeah, and, but I also want to make sure we, we don't forget this. The strip of land between, uh, the strip of commercial land between May Street. And Rosemary Street.
Yeah.
But at that, uh, we should be considering whether we should, uh, rezone that strip to allow mixed use.
I think, but isn't that part of the, that could be under a headline under the MBTA Communities, because that's part of that whole.
But mixed use is different. Uh, you can't just have mixed use. It will not comply with the MBTA Communities Act. You have to allow separately, uh, and, and I think this is what was recommended in the housing plan. Is allow, um, standalone multifamily.
Right.
And mixed use. And I think that's fine.
At the same time, or we're gonna miss opportunities on either one.
Yes, I think we should be considering that.
I guess I'm trying to figure out which ones can be looked at at the same time so that you.
I think Jean's right, that district, that's a business district. That was a district that has not been looked at for a long time. We kind of. Drop the ball on that because of the ownership. So that district does need to be looked at.
But it's part of the spine.
In a, in a mixed use context, but a piece of it can be eaten away at through the MBTA Communities Act, the housing piece of it. I allow that as a bright.
But that can be integrated into that study is what I'm saying. So, so there are things, Adam, that can be integrated into the study that don't have to become individual studies.
Right, understood. Uh. Um. Just making a note as you're saying that. Thank you very much. Uh. Um. And then in addition to that, I think as a holdover from our building commissioner. There, for some time, there was a discussion about modifying our customary home occupations. And updating those. Um. And I, I don't think that would necessarily be a, a very, uh, you know, onerous, uh, process.
No.
So.
You're saying that that came from the building commissioner?
Yes.
What, what change is he looking for?
Well.
Well, because when you look at the definition of a customary home occupation right now, it's very narrow. It's like dressmakers and. I think the kinds of activities that happened maybe thirty years ago. And so I think there are certain activities that are happening now, really, as customary home occupations that aren't necessarily reflected in the definition.
Oh, I'd like to know specifically.
So that's, so I, I don't think that's. I don't think, I don't think that's.
Oh. Okay, so it's, it's cookie, it's deserving, it's breastmaking. It prepares small appliances and other small items. Uh, so it's kind of talking about the kinds of activities that are happening in houses. And they don't believe written anywhere. The, the, all this, and it probably makes sense to have our definition.
Yeah, but, but what are those, what are those activities that he's talking about that people are doing? I don't, I don't even know.
Yes, there was, there was a draft, I, I'm glad to share.
Okay.
Virtually, almost everything is done in people's homes these days.
Well, this is COVID also, also.
So we'll get, we'll put that list from, uh, uh, from Lee, um, and then we'll consider that, uh, as well. And then, you know, what action would be necessary and when we can schedule that action and activity. Uh, the next, uh, item, um, is. Did someone say something? Yes?
Jean, yes, yes. Wait, I put this in email to you, Adam, when we were putting this together a month or so ago. Um, and I think it belongs in two places. We need to rethink our site plan approval process. And it belongs both in residential and in commercial, I suppose. Although it could be down in, in, at the end in other. But it is something we really need to pay attention to. Partly because it's something that with regard to multifamily housing and the housing that would be allowed under MBTA Communities law. We want to make sure we have better site plan approval process that makes sense for that type of use. And, and then we recently had the experience of uses allowed by right under state law. And it seemed like we were allowing especially permit where we couldn't. It, it's part of our bylaw that we really need to revisit. I'm not sure which category it belongs in, but we, we have to put it on the list, I think.
Thank you, Jean. I, um, I kind of had it already in my mind as part of the, uh, planning board retreat. Uh, I've already emailed town council to talk about. Our special permit process and our site plan. Special permit process, which ultimately is what you're talking about. I agree. And, um, and. You know, to ensure compliance with MBTA and also in other areas, I think. Um, uh, that, that's a necessary thing and, uh, I see that as coming under part of the planning board retreat, but. Regardless of where we categorize it, you know, even if it comes up under other. We can add it there.
If I may respond to that, because I see the retreat as being. Kind of training and never making sure everybody understands how things are done now and in accordance with law. Uh, whereas this is something we know we need to change, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Paul.
Talking about having a retreat, meaning the five of us meet with town council. And go over certain legal, legal issues of what we're doing. Have you discussed this with town council? Can we have a retreat? Can we have a retreat without violating the open meeting law?
I'll be working with town council and with, uh, Katie King to ensure that. Whatever way in which we deliver the, uh, deliver the training that it's done in accordance with the law, Paul. I've already begun the, I've already begun the conversation with town council. I don't have a definitive answer on the, on the method in which that happens, but that will come up soon and we'll discuss that. Right?
What's, what's the, what's the problem with it having the, an announced meeting and having open to the public via Zoom anyway? What's, what's the, what's the issue with having that?
I, I don't know why we, well, retreats usually, you know. You get away from having, having it on a Tuesday night.
Well, I understand that.
And, and, uh, you know, you get away on a Sunday morning and, you know, I, I.
Yeah, but we've had meetings, you know, nine AM on Friday morning, for example. So, so we have a code retreat. We're talking to town council.
In other words, we're gonna have a meeting with town council.
Yeah, we're gonna have a meeting with town council. There's not gonna be any open meeting discussions with other people in the communities and lots of ourselves and. And it's open, it's, and it has a Zoom. There you go. I'm, 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 I'm not sure of the issue.
There may be some exceptions.
There isn't an issue. It's just that.
There may be some exceptions and we should find out if there are.
We will, we will. Thank you very much for raising that. So. Um, so we can categorize site plan review process under other. Uh, so climate action. There is, uh, we've received from, uh, Stephen Frail, uh, and his letter. Uh, his email to us, I think dated on May seventeen, I think was included in our packet again tonight. Uh, if we're looking to do some changes to our zoning bylaw for. Uh, we'll talk about this in more detail momentarily for October of this year. You know, we're gonna have to start almost immediately. We do have some zoning, some early draft. Poncep zoning, um, which I think is helpful. Uh, and, you know, we have to discuss, Lee will need your input on what time we have available to us. In order to be able to, you know, finalize that, you know, the draft of the public policy. And to start a community review process. And to have the, you know, the, uh, our hearing and time, you know, for, uh, you know, for the special town meeting in October. So there are a number of changes, ones that relate to solar canopies, whether they're over a parking lot like. Uh, uh, I think, uh, all in college or whether they're over a parking garage like, uh, what, uh, we went through with the special permit process. For, uh, BP, for Boston Properties, that I think the property one forty Kendrick Street. Um, and then I think already has talked about, for instance, having. Uh, you know, a solar canopy over other mechanicals. Uh, on a property for a property owner to be able to take advantage of solar panels across the whole of the. The building, uh, and not to be prohibited by the height above the mechanicals for solar. And then there's separately solar panels. And what requirements, if any, we would make on commercial real estate. Residential and if residential and single family and, uh, multifamily. And then also we have now already in our bylaw. Um, uh, a large size ground mounted, uh, uh, solar, uh, panel, um. You know, do we not, and then do we want to modify that to allow for small and medium sized? Uh, um, uh, facilities. Also, uh, do we modify to ensure, uh, modify to allow? And reduce any regulatory burden for geothermal technology? And then I also want to set up more specific sustainability goals for the town. And this may be a bit of a, you know, almost like a retreat or. Maybe it's not a retreat, but you know, I think the board, I think we should round table and have a session. Just dealing with these items, but in particular, system, our sustainability goals. For residential development, for commercial development. And also for the municipality, maybe there are different systems or goals, uh, you know, for the municipality. And also, uh, to potentially modify our administrative practices. In our applications and our hearings and in our conditions that relate to those sustainability goals. Um, and the next category is, and I don't know that we would necessarily have. A zoning change on all of these, but. To ensure that our, our zoning is, uh, you know, is met with a bet, meeting the best practices for diversity, equity and inclusivity. We don't really have any goals right now. I think we should start setting those up. And I think part of that is collecting information like we've talked about before. On applications, on the representation of, you know, the developers in front of us. And that will help inform us as, you know, uh, and what goals we, uh, choose to set.
Uh, Adam, excuse me.
Yeah.
What, what did the developers in front of us have to do with us as a planning board goals?
Well, what I mean to say is, Arty, I appreciate the question and the opportunity to clarify that. I, I've asked, I've asked a year ago, I think, that we. That we modify our application. So when a developer is coming in to it with us for a, uh, for an application. We ask and our, we change our applications to ask, you know, what are you doing, you know, uh, how, uh, perhaps employees you have. You know, it, you know, do you have any underserved, uh, 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 um, you know, communities, uh, minorities? Women.
That we want to have, so I mean, other mass port, other, other municipalities have goals for sustainability and for diversity.
So it's basically, so it's data collection. I mean, we can't, we can't do anything with it for the developer, but it's data collection to see what's happening.
Policy.
So, so it's a multi-step. It's a multi, I see it as a multi-step process already. One is that's.
Uh, Natasha just said something that hit, hit the chord. So my apologies. I agree.
Right. And then.
It's just, it's creating policy, like, you know, mass, a lot of different municipalities and different agencies. Create, create goals. Like, we want ten percent, you know, to, to be a minority women or veteran in charge. And, and, and they're used to all of the developers now and all the contractors are used to, and all the, you know. Services are used to giving that criteria. We don't have any criteria like that. So we can have, you know. So they don't have to include anyone, um, who is diverse or who's underrepresented on their teams at this moment. So what are the goals that we wish for that and for sustainability? Like, do we have a minimum? Like, you have to meet whatever, the stretch code. I mean, I'm just throwing, I mean, I know you have to, but you're. Well, what do we want to do as a town? And I think, um. I, I think it's important to just, you know, understand what, what policy we would like to propose. Okay.
First, we need to collect the information. That's the first step.
I agree.
But I guess my question is, what information are we collecting? Because. I think it's more of a policy, right? So you're saying.
We will, well, we need to have a session on this to talk that through Natasha to answer that. Ultimately, I see we need to start to collect some information. With that information, once we have enough of it, we can then determine what policy we want to set, if any. Um, and, you know, the, uh, to make our zoning more inclusive and more equitable. Um, uh, you know, I think that's a laudable goal. We've talked about that before. Uh, uh, and to be able to, uh, uh, facilitate underrepresented populations in our process.
Right, so just from, from all of the projects that, that, you know, I work with developers and we go after projects all over the city and all over, you know, in different towns. One of the things is that if you don't set policy, no one feels the need to meet anything, right? Unless they're competing for something. So the only reason why the, the mass port in the, in the city of Boston. Have been able to, to, to create policy, I mean, to, to, to make it successful and accountable. Is because they set the policy that you have to meet it. So now it's a requirement that if you want to do a project, it better be lead. Or you're not going to be considered for, you know, for that project if you're competing. So in most of these cases, these developers are not necessarily competing for these projects. So why would they have any goals that would make them have to be accountable for it? I guess so. I guess that's what I'm saying, Adam, is that. It, the only reason that you, you know, you would, you would ask them. Is, is, I mean, I guess what is the reason for asking them? Because they're not going to do anything. It's more work for them to do it. Most of them actually, like, well, if, if they do any work anywhere near Boston, they have to do it anyway. So it's becoming the norm.
Well, there's also, we're, we're also looking at how, what is a diversification in the company, correct? Is that what we're looking at also?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess that question. I think.
We're not.
We're not gonna answer it right now, but to tell you the truth, just finding out, I don't know what that's.
I'd like to know what other towns.
Gonna do for us, right? It's more creating policy of what, what are our goals for it?
I'd like to know what other towns are doing. I mean.
Yeah.
You just, you, you just mentioned two agencies where there's competitive bidding for projects.
Because they own the land.
Right. Planning board.
Right.
We don't, we, we don't oversee that.
Exactly.
All that we have is special permits and site plan special permits.
Right.
And, you know, we can.
But as a town.
Legally, legally, the question becomes, can, can we amend our bylaws? To include those as criteria?
Right.
Or whether or not we issue site plan or, um, a special permit or a site plan. Review, whether that's a criterion that we are allowed to, to have. I, I don't see why not, but.
And the same thing for sustainability, like if we want, you know, the, the certain requirements, like. We want projects to be solar ready, let's just say.
Yeah.
Of a certain size. We have to, we, we can't just do it project by project or people are necessarily.
Start talking about diversity and inclusivity, you start talking about. Uh, areas that get to certain constitutional criteria that, you know, certain constitutional rights.
Right, but you can say if you're building.
It's like affirmative action and.
Cambridge and Somerville and Brookline, all of these towns have policy, I believe.
Yeah.
And saying, saying, you know, maybe we, you know, we want five percent of your team to come from, you know, to, to be women or minority.
They're doing a project on town on land.
It's.
It's also for private.
Also for private, for the, for a permit.
Well, well, we'll look into it, Adam. I know you're trying to, we'll look into it, but I think, I think just big picture here. One of the things where I think we can make a big impact is, and we need to talk to is PPBC. Because we do hire, um, consultants and we do hire consultants here. Like when you hire someone to do a traffic study. You can say, you know, you'd like.
I was thinking about the right, the regulatory.
I think there's two pieces, there's a lot of pieces to it.
Yeah.
Um, but I guess what I'm saying, Adam, is we can keep track of what people are doing, but because there's no mandate to anything. Most people won't do anything unless there's policy.
So, a, a, all I want to do here is flag this. And now, and then we will come up with a strategy. Uh, and a program that, you know, that makes sense for us to set about policy, because right now we don't have policy. We don't have any accountability on anything. We're not collecting information and there's an opportunity to do that. So. Um, you know, both in terms of, you know, when, uh, when the town is sending out to bid. That in a competitive process for municipal projects and municipal properties is the one, is one part of it and private. Uh, development is another part of it. So, you know, we'll come back, you know, we'll come back to the board with. You know, more clarity on that. I, I wanted to make sure that we had added it to our, you know, our, our priorities. Then we have the category of other. Um, uh, which there was a question from. Um, uh, our building commissioner about rear lots and corner lots. Um, and, uh, we'll add to this other category site, our site plan review process and procedure. Um, and. Um, Lee, I think you have some information on the corner lots and, and rear lots, I think. You know, this is something that Dave Roach had brought up before.
Yeah, so I think there's a, I mean, one was, you know, what constitutes a rear yard versus a side yard. And, but there's currently, I think, a court case on this, so it's really not right to be. At this point, I'll be.
Currently in the courts and we're waiting to see.
Is there a court case related to Nevin or is it related to Nevin property?
Yeah. Yeah. It was a ZBA.
You like take it and say, take it to Alphington, Alphington vote, Markley vote? Alphington and Markley Road, is that the, is that the corner lot?
I don't know what the corner lot is, but I don't, I know that they're the kings of the ZBA.
Can you get the site for the case? I'd like to look it up and see if they're on.
I'm sure we can.
Yeah, no, it's currently in the court, uh, the website, masscourts dot, dot org.
Guys, it's, it's after ten o'clock. I don't want this meeting to go to eleven. Uh, let alone later, and it's still, we still have other agenda items. And I also wanted to, um, you know, go through the, you know, this, uh, this spreadsheet. To figure out, you know. We already know, so what I've done is I've already planted. So, uh, uh, anchors. You know, in the schedule. We can obviously modify this and this is a start for, you know, for tonight, but I'm also mindful of the hour and we should have another session to, you know, to deal with this. Um. But in the Excel spreadsheet. Uh, we have, so I've identified, you know, you know, the training and. Um, and then additionally, the other, uh, category headings, housing, commercial, climate action, uh, diversity. Equity and inclusion, and also I'll add, uh, subsequent to this at our next draft. Uh, the site plan review process. Um, and so there are certain things that, you know, that we know. Um, we know that, uh, uh, in July, we'll, at our next meeting, we'll resolve. That, uh, the planning board representatives for, uh, for the MBTA communities. Uh, in June, already we voted the charge. Uh, this is just as an example, but we suspect that we'll have three community meetings. So this is not resolved yet because the home committee has not been activated yet. Um, but it may be something like a community meeting in November. Another one maybe in January, another one perhaps in April. This is not set in stone. But I say that because we know that there are certain other dates and working back from October. Uh, of twenty, uh, twenty-four, we need a bylaw change at that time. The, uh, we have a hearing and the language needs to be finalized in September. Uh, and the planning board language for the legal notice, we have to vote to send it to the select board. And the select board has to refer it back to the planning board that it would occur by July. And we'd want to basically have all, you know, the, uh, that zoning. Uh, you know, almost complete. We have to add into the schedule. The review, uh, the submission to, uh, DHCD and their review period. And that will, and some other factors will influence when we, these community meetings are done and what we expect out of these community meetings. Uh, what, uh, work product we expect, which we'll talk about when we have more information on it. Um, housing, uh, if, uh, housing of, uh, affordable housing and applying that. To, uh, to all districts. Um, you know, we can decide either tonight or if it's getting late, we can have another meeting at our next meeting. We can re, get a little more clarity of when we are able to. Uh, to do this, but. Uh, if we want to modify our housing, our, our zoning by law. Um, you know, we have to be mindful of when we would hold the hearing, when the zoning change would happen. When we have to hold the hearing and, um, you know, have the, uh, the legal notice and so on for the warrant. And that's true with all of these. So the Needham Housing. Authority, uh, as an example, I've mapped this out. This is not set in stone, but. They have an appointment with us tonight to talk about how they wanted to go from. A ZBA's, uh, um, process to, uh, uh, bylaw change process. In July, that I think the consultant will be hired. Uh, that might inform part of our process and ultimately our, our zoning. But I hopefully, I would like to see us in, uh, September, we would have, you know, our first community meeting slash hearing. Um, uh, we're not going to, um, October town meeting. Um, but we would need in November, I think, to have the proposed language for another community meeting. And then in December, we would, um, we would, uh, the planning board refer, would refer that. The, the language to the select board, the select word refers it back to us. Also in December, so in January, we can conduct our hearing. And then, uh, in February, we may have a potentially a, a continued hearing. Um, and then we would finalize the language for the warrant by March. And then for May of twenty twenty-four, that we'd be able to pass, uh, a zoning bylaw change. If we wanted to, uh, modify and allow for detached ADUs or at least to present it to town meeting based on. A May twenty twenty-four schedule. Again, we'd have to working back finalize the language by March, conduct our hearing in February and it might need two hearings. Um, uh, and then, you know, in January, again, we have to, uh, refer to the select board. They refer back to us. Which is why I thought our first hearing slash community meeting should really be this November. In order to meet, you know, a May twenty twenty-four target, and if that's not realistic. And we want to push this out to October, you know, we can do that. And that may be what we do with the floor area ratio consideration.
Yeah, I don't see, I, 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 it can give me. They give me a message here. Uh, firstly, I do not see. It, um, wise to mix detached ADUs with the MBTA Community Act conversations. I don't see it, I don't see that being a wise idea. We should let that go. Deal with the MBTA Communities Act, get that going and then, then, then after that, we can deal with. Detached ADUs, if, if it's, if it's still coming up, we can deal with them then. I do not think it's wise to deal with it again so soon. Not, especially not with the MBTA Community Act, probably conversations going on and those are much more. Not, especially not with the MBTA Community Act conversations going on. And those are much more pivotal, pivotal than they.
I hear you. I hear you. Uh, let me ask. I was gonna do this after, but I suppose I could do it now. Uh, Natasha. Do you want to, I'm gonna ask everyone down the board, um. Do you want, and already just, just to be clear by this. Um, you know, this schedule, for example, detached ADUs, it's nothing is set in stone here. But I guess the question is. You know, do we want to start the process? And have a community meeting could be in September or October. It doesn't have to be in November. You know, we could have mul, we could have multiple meetings. We might have one in September. One in, uh, November, we may have another one in January. And then that might put us on an October twenty twenty-four. Or we can move to a May twenty twenty-five. Schedule, Natasha, do you have any thoughts?
I, I, I don't think it's a priority for me right now. I think we have bigger fish to fry, like the MBTA communities, and I don't want it to dilute all of that. Over something that I don't think is going to produce as much housing as we'd like compared to other, you know, and. I'm not saying it's, it's not important in the future, but right now. I, I think we should focus on the things that are going to create the most change and the most opportunity.
I like your thinking. On that basis, if it's okay with everyone. What's that, I, I couldn't hear.
You like Ari's thinking, but you like mine. He liked your thinking too. He just didn't say it out loud.
You know, I'll come to you in a second, but it sounds like whatever we decide, if it's not for this and our, Arty, I do.
I was kidding. I'm totally.
So I do, you know, maybe we'll put it on for, push it out to twenty twenty-five or something. But yes, uh, Jean, go ahead.
Yes, um, uh, just wanted to go back for a sec, uh, to the affordable housing. Uh, it's, it's just not realistic, uh, to, to try to have a community meeting in July. And have something on the October town meeting. Um, however, I would like to get that addressed. Um, at the May two thousand twenty-four town meeting and, um. And I think it could be done by then. Um, that could work out a timing. Uh, that leads to the May twenty twenty-four town meeting.
What I will do for our next meeting, uh, I'll modify this. I agree with you. I think that. By, I think this is a pretty aggressive schedule for an October bylaw change. So I'll modify this for a schedule for May twenty twenty-four. Bylaw change, and then we'll review it again as a group and see if. If that schedule still works. And for detached ADUs, I'll. I'll push that out to twenty twenty-five, but. Um, uh. Paul, did you have a comment on detached ADUs and the timing of it, or do you concur with Arty and Natasha?
I concur with Arty and Natasha.
And on that issue, I concur as well.
Okay, uh. So I will, just for the purposes of putting it in a map, only so we can see it on our, like, on our maps, uh. I'll push it into twenty twenty-five. So we see it's there, uh.
By that insight.
All right. Hi.
Mister Mr. Chair also says, as far as, no, we're not pushing, we're not going to push back the solar canopy's part though, are we? We're still like old to get that on the October town meeting, right?
Let's, let's, let's just go through this. We're almost there and then we'll, I, I don't.
I think the sustainability is a priority, at least all of them.
If we, if, if we have to look at this. It, guys, in, in our past, we've not, we haven't had this schedule laid out like this before.
And I think.
No, thank you for doing it. I guess it's a.
Great process, but I think, I think we need to do that. We're gonna chip out it little by little, otherwise.
Well, I don't know if I hear multiple speaking at once, or if it's just me.
Mister Chair. Lee Newman just pointed out to me, if I may. That. If we're gonna have something for the October town meeting. On the schedule that Lee Newman has. For what we need to do for an October town meeting. We need to have our zoning bylaw language ready to go to send to the select board. At our July eleventh meeting. That ain't gonna happen. Well, then we have the solar canopies, or some of the solar canopies is almost, uh. It's almost there.
So what, Arty, what the, Arty, what that would basically mean is, and I think what Paul is reflecting. Is that the, the board hasn't had a chance to discuss any of the. You know, regulations uses and any of the details in small, it's not to say that the board opposes it. But we, you know, we have at this point, three weeks. In order to finalize the language. And that would effectively be our next meeting. So we have one meeting. In order to get that complete. And so, but Paul, let me. You know, that's coming up in a bit. I just want to, uh, you know, go through the commercial. And then we'll come to climate action. Is that okay?
Yeah, no, I, I just, you know.
But I thought we already talked about climate action.
Well, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna come back, like, we're talking about all of these now in terms of the schedule. Cause I think this, I think this planning tool is helpful. To identify. What needs to be done and in place in order to be able to take any action by a certain deadline. So. Um. You know, with, with Great Plains. Uh. You know, I understand that, that, you know, we want to protect, potentially tuck that in as part of the MBTA communities. Um. You know, uh. One way of having that done is, and some. May think it might be helpful to have this part of it done. In May. Of twenty twenty-four. Which would mean, you know, finalizing the language for the warrant in March. Uh, we would have. Uh, working back to hearing in February. And then we would have, um. Uh, you know, the referral program between the planning board and the select board in January. If we were to do that, I would like to see us. Have at least one community meeting or hearing. Because I, I, you know, for September. And then another one with more specific. Zoning laid out for November.
So Adam, I have a quick question. I mean, to, is, is it worth now that we've gotten kind of everyone's priorities?
I'm sorry, Natasha. Just, I apologize. It's hard for me in the computer was to hear. Is there someone else talking in the room at the same time?
No. No, not, not right now.
You're, you're hearing things, Adam.
Now, we, I think, I think somebody was whispering, but it, and this must be really.
Sensible.
Sensitive. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, I think. Knowing that what the priorities are, should we take a stab at this offline and just try to create a, something, you know, kind of a bigger picture, rather than going one by one and then. And then, um, sharing it. And, and reviewing it at the next meeting.
Well, then, what I'm. I, I, I appreciate that. What I'd like to do now. You know, in, you know, in honor of Arty's comment a minute ago. Is to actually look at the schedule, in particular with the climate action. For the solar canopies. I don't think that we would get us our sustainability goals and geothermal complete. For this, but. I. You know, thinking through. Um. You know, do we have, you know, do we have the capacity and the ability and the time of the schedule? To be able to get the zoning complete for October, or Lee, are you saying that more realistically?
It's May.
For May.
I think, I think the realistic answer is May. I mean, we're not gonna have zoning done by July, July by July alone.
And, and don't we want to have, I mean, I think one of the things that we heard about the ADUs is we didn't even, we didn't have enough public comment. And so, and if we have to do something in three weeks, there's no, really no opportunity for anyone to vet.
That would happen. That would actually, that would actually.
It's not that I don't want to do it, but I, but I mean, if this whole, if, if, if community process, we haven't been as successful. On other, on the ADUs and on, on things recently, shouldn't we do it right? And.
Yeah, we have to.
We have to listen to, to the town members that are saying that they need time to be able to absorb this and comment.
Yeah, we have to do it right. If we keep making substantial changes to the language after July. Following the public comment, then that's not gonna, that's not.
I understand the comment that both of you are making. I think we all agree that we want to. Ensure that we have a, you know, a good process in place, I think. Uh. You know, but just so everyone's clear. Uh. You know, we, if we. Have the language. In, you know, for instance, in July, it's not to say that there's no opportunity for influence. By the public, because that just begins the process. Uh, you know, here I, I thought we would have by, uh, July, which may not be the best time, but. You know, it. It is an option. We hold a community meeting, then we refer language back and forth. And then we would have a hearing. In September. To find, you know, that would be the final language for the October meeting. And that.
What that means, Adam, is we have to be. As unrestricted as reasonable, these, we can only be more restricted, correct, on future language change? Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean.
So we love to define what that means by.
But on this stuff, I'm not entirely sure that it's gonna have the same level of. Um. Uh, contentiousness as others, but. But the point, I think the point is valid, and I think what Lee is saying. Is we just don't even have time now to start this process. You know, with, even though we have draft language from Stephen Frail. Doesn't sound like we have enough internal capacity to be able to start this next month in a couple of weeks. So.
I think we have draft language in Stephen Frail, but that begs the question, you agree with the draft language in Stephen Frail? Is that the right framework?
No, some, no, some of the news changing. I already know that.
So, um, I think we, I think this board needs to figure out what its policy is. Um.
We also need to have a public discussion at a meeting hall. Call for that purpose. With a note, you know, with a notice that says we're going to discuss. Draft language presented by Stephen Frail, or you know, that. That the, which we have not done. You know, we have, and it's eleven pages long.
So then here's what I need to do. I.
We, we can't just, we can't just take what Stephen Frail says and says, okay, let's, let's send it to the select board. We can't do that. We, we, we need to review it. We need to have a, we need to have an open meeting. To discuss it. To see where we want to go with it, the changes we want to make to it. Uh, what, what the community who is sitting in the audience have an opportunity to tell us what they think. Um, you know, this is what's, I'll be month process.
But just to, just to recap then, if, if I may, if I'm hearing the board correctly. Notwithstanding our desire to have this done yesterday. The reality is, we'll have to put this on the schedule for a May, for, uh, for May town meeting.
And, and I think that we, you know, anything that we want for the next October, we have to have done by, by May or June. So we have to work backwards. For that. So when we start putting together the, you know, the Excel spreadsheet, I think taking that into account. To make sure that we have enough time to vet it correctly, or things that may seem like low hanging fruit. May turn into something that, you know, won't even be passed. So I just want to make sure that we don't lose opportunities for. And six months isn't gonna make or break.
Yeah, so, so what that, what that means is. Then we, the only thing we can do for this October town meeting, which is, which would only be some very minor technical changes, language changes. There's nothing. I don't think there's anything we have cooking right now, which could remotely make, make October, except for again, some minor language changes. Something like that.
But then would you do that and then go back again in six months?
No, again, I'm not, I'm not suggesting you do that.
Hey, yeah, and then make sure that.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
And people feel comfortable.
No, I'm not saying you do that. And the main, the main technical thing, the technical thing as I'm talking about are existing bylaws. So, so I'm not suggesting we do anything, because that's all we have time for.
And, and I think all of us want, you know, this to happen quickly and everything, but I think we need to do it right, or.
Six, six, six months is gonna get us something.
So I'm gonna, if I, if I may, it's ten thirty. I, uh, I think this has been a, it's been a very helpful discussion for me. I, it's been very informative. If you're okay, I'm, I'm asking this to the board. If you're okay, I'm gonna go back, synthesize, uh, our, my notes from this meeting. Natasha, I'll present to you, you know, modified version of this, and then we'll get it to. Uh, Lee, and Lee will ask for any comments that you and Alex you may have. And then we'll send it to the board in the next week or so with an update copy of this. Uh, Jean, I see your hand is up.
Uh, yes, uh, two things that may note, and I keep waiting to say, um. Your, your spreadsheet, this is wonderful, and you're going to revise it, and it's, it's really good. We should have had this for years, you know, um, but, um, mixed, a mixed use zoning is now on the planning book priorities list. But it's nowhere on this chart and it belongs into commercial. Um. With, um. Either the same timeframe as MBTA communities or. The, uh, earlier timeframe of, um, May, um, to, to two thousand twenty-four town meeting, I think. But, um. Mixed use zoning.
I appreciate the comment. That's helpful. Thank you. So.
It could be a longer timeframe, uh, but then the other thing that we don't have on the list at all. And yet we've talked about, uh, addressing it is a tree bylaw.
Well, I can speak to that.
The select board's goals. Don't actually say a tree bylaw. They say, um, sponsor a tree summit. In FY twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, are we gonna just not do anything yet and leave it up to the select board?
I think because the, you know, that comes under the general bylaw and not the zoning bylaw. It was resolved that that, you know, the lead would come from. The select board on that, and I think their process is they want to have a summit. And then they'll determine what outcome or procedure or process they want to, um. Invoke at that, you know, at that time. And if there is a modification to be done on the, uh, our zoning bylaw, then we'll take action to do that.
And that's part of the CAPC, which is led by the select board anyway. Mary Ann is, is.
Okay, okay. I just want to ask the question. Thank you. That's part of that. That sounds fine. Yeah.
I'd like to make it by May.
Yes, Paul.
I think it will. From my recollection of this very productive discussion, by the way, very productive discussion. We have a lot of zoning. Bylaw changes that we're saying, bring it in May, bring it in May, bring it in May. And I want you to put it together. On this chart or, you know, all of these going towards May. Once we have that chart, we gotta look at it. And if we have half dozen, eight. Zoning bylaw provisions that we want to bring to the May town meeting. That ain't gonna fly. Uh. We, as a board or individual members, we need to look at the chart. And we need to prioritize. Individually and say, okay, I can't bring all of these next May. Because we wind up, we're going into June. And, uh, we have to figure out. Which are the big. Three.
That have most impact.
That, right. That, that we need to bring. And number one, already, we already know. Has got to be, um. Linden Chambers. So that leaves, you know, nu- number one is already off the list. You know, we're now dealing with two, maybe three more. That we can add, but let's get the list of what.
Exactly.
Tonight we want to bring in May, and then we're gonna have to pare it down.
That's right. I agree. I, um.
One, one more comment on timing. I think we should respect the town's tradition of saying. Uh, but we have a choice about it. We're not under some amazing pressure like this MBTA law. Um, we should not have zoning in the fall. Um, a special town meeting, that should be devoted primarily to financial articles. And if, you know, years ago, I thought, why is he saying that? Why do we do that? But I can really understand it. We want to have it a brief as possible fall town meeting that deals with financials. And I think if we keep to that. Policy, uh, people will, uh, be happy about it.
Well, I would, in general, I agree. I would say if this was two months ago and we knew we could bring some climate.
and we knew we could bring some climate action articles to October, I'd say we're bringing them to October. That'll be my personal feeling. That'll be my personal feeling, because that, that, that is a priority.
Right.
Yeah, that may be one of our priorities.
And it's a priority for many. I mean.
It should be.
It's not just for our group, but it's a priority for, for the town in general, and many of the committees and that.
Oh, there was only two minutes. Put it off.
Let's put it off.
Uh, yeah, but let me just fi- finish up with this, if I may, please. So I'm glad we, I'm glad we have this as a starting point. This is definitely not an ending point. I think these are good, important, helpful planning tools. It's an ongoing process, Paul. We're gonna modify this as we go month in and month out. But thank you all for your participation and dedication tonight. Um, I think we're gonna, uh, punt on the minutes. Do we have a report from Lee or Alex?
I would just say that I am working now on the, um, scope of work and the RFP, um, to hire the consultants to support the home group. Um, we hope to get that out sometime within the next four months.
Excellent. Uh, Lee, do you have anything to? Mention? Sorry.
You mean Alex? Lee just mentioned.
I'm sorry. I, I meant, I meant Alex. I'm sorry. Do you have anything else? Okay.
You're all set.
So for correspondence, we received, uh, a notice of public hearing from the city of Newton for, uh, uh, for their consideration of a new village center overlay district, and I think that hearing is on May twenty-sixth, if I'm correct. Other way, the correspondence.
May, you mean June?
June.
June.
I apologize. It's that hour. Um, why I like to have meetings done by ten. Uh, the, um, yes, uh, in June, I think it's June twenty-sixth. The notice of hearing is in our packet. And then again, we had an email from, um, uh, Joe Matthews from, uh, precinct I, uh, dated, uh, June eighteen. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Any discussion?
I defer to Natasha.
Natasha, we have a motion by, uh, Artie, a second by Natasha. Any discussion? Hearing that'll come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Hi.
Pretty Crocker.
Hi.
Natasha Spada.
Hi.
Jean McKnight.
Hi.
Chair votes aye. Thank you all very much. We are adjourned.
Yeah, that's your call.
I either need to call Steve to come over and pick.